Franklin County Board of County Commissioners is now in session for this regular meeting Tuesday, July 16th. It's good to see you all here this morning. We have quite a bit on the agenda, so we're going to get started today. If we would, let's open with prayer and pledge. Our Father, we thank you today for your hand in our lives. We thank you for the wisdom, Lord, that we're asking from you that we know that you give right now, Lord, to make good and prudent wise decisions, not just for our todays, but for every tomorrow that we have here as residents of Franklin County. Be with us in our discussions, in our decision makings today. Give us a listening ear, in Jesus' name.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Rowan, are there any, anything to be added to the agenda?
Well, good morning Commissioners. Mr. Chairman, I'm not sure if we've considered this an addition. Late yesterday evening, Mrs. Griffith turned in a supplemental report. There were two additional items for her report. We may treat it as a late add, or since it was on there last night, we could, I'm getting it.
Is it posted on what was in the back of the room this morning?
Yes, in the back of the room. I'm trying to see where the echo has come from, but yes, sir. So either which way, you can decide how we're going to handle that, okay?
Let's just cover it. If we would, let's do it as an addition to the agenda. You know what I'm saying?
Yes, sir.
That will whenever it's included. So those are the only things, two items from Ms. Griffith?
Yes, that is the only change that I'm aware of for the agenda today, sir.
So motion to adopt the agenda and move forward?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Sanders, seconded by Commissioner Anderson. Any discussion, Commissioners, before we vote? All in favor? Any opposed? That's a five oh vote, Mr. Jefferson. Next is approval of minutes and payment of county bills?
So moved.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Ward, seconded by Commissioner Crone. Do we have any discussion, Commissioners, before we vote? All in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous. All right. So now we have a special recognition this morning.
Oh, we do.
For Mr. Mark Currenton, the county planner.
Yes, we do, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, and I am going to turn this over to someone who is not just older, but wiser than me, has been here a lot longer and probably more familiar. Yes, and we had to go and get a special group to get him from North Carolina to bring him back. Mr. Pierce, good morning, sir.
Good morning, Commissioners. A pleasure to be here and certainly a pleasure to recognize Mark for all the years he served in great capacity for myself and the people of Franklin County. Again, Mark and I, I thought we were a great team. Mark is a team player, and he helped me in many ways. First of all, I'll just say before I get to the resolution that one of the things, the reason I hired him, and I got here, believe it or not, I'll be very brief, although it's hard for me to be brief in front of a microphone, so I apologize for that, is that Mark actually entered for the job as county planner first in 1988, but he didn't have his master's degree finished, and Mike McDaniel, who was the head of the DCA Arctic Circle Securing Program for Franklin County, encouraged Mark to finish his degree because if he came here and started working, as we both learned, it's a full-time job, and he would never finish his master's degree, still work on his thesis. So he came back to University of Florida and said, look, Alan, there's this job over there, and maybe you want it. I thought, panhandle it. I was born and raised in Florida. I lived in Gainesville, lived in Key West, but I'd never gone east or west of the Swanee River. I thought, what's over there? So I came over here and met James Floyd, and James said, well, you look good enough, you know, you can have the job if you want. So I, and I finished my master's degree because unlike Mark, he was doing a true thesis with information and new research. In my job, I went to Grinner Hall, the University of Florida Graduate School, and said, what's the basic requirements to get a master's degree? And they said seventy pages. I said, I'm doing seventy-one pages with a front piece and an acknowledgement, and that's my thesis. So I got there, I did it a little faster than Mark did, and I was done in May, and so James Floyd hired me, or recommended me hire, the board hired me back then. And a couple months later, Mark had finished his thesis and was looking for a job, and by this time, James Floyd had retired, so we had this ability for me to go become county planner and Mark to take over the job I was, I had. And Mark had one talent that I really want to emphasize because it was critical to the development of good planning and just good, not necessarily development in the sense of construction, but development in the sense of community. He did the base maps for Franklin County, for the nine-one-one system, for the county zoning map. He created those by hand, just with his ability as a cartographer, which is something that most people don't have, and certainly I, as a planner, did not have. But as you go back into the map drawer, those maps you see on mylar, Mark drew by hand with the assistance of curlicue things and his ability to scale and map out. So he turned a circular globe into a flat map. Usually, you go the other way around, but he made the world flat on those mylars we have back there, and we still use them to this day for nine-one-one and for the basic zoning. So really, he was critical to get that, to make it obvious and evident to people when they came in to see what their property was zoned, to see, to get a house number. Those maps were the basis for us to move forward as a community, so you could get mail service on St. George Island at your homes, you could get it in East Point. We did all this mapping that he did ninety percent of it, and so I have to give him a great deal of congratulations and credit for that because if I was here by myself, it never would have gotten done, or it wouldn't have been in order, and it wouldn't have been logical, and it wouldn't have been straightforward. So Mark deserves a great deal of credit for moving forward with that. The other thing he deserves a great deal of credit for is the number of grants that he successfully did for the county. I mean, he probably, none of us have had it up, but it's millions of dollars of grants that he administered from Franklin County, and all of those passed any audit that anybody came down to see. His books, his files were in complete order, unlike me or somebody else who's sitting over here, where, you know, we know it's in there somewhere, but we don't quite know where. But Mark knew where it was. He sometimes knew where it was in our files, but he always had it in his file. So I give him a great deal of credit for being, again, for being logical and orderly and successfully administering lots of grants in all different capacities for Franklin County. The third thing he did, and I don't know how I should say this without making me seem like a fool, but that hasn't been the first time, is that he was very good in giving me a conservative, different approach to some of my interpretations of different ordinances and rules and regulations. So the county looks a lot different because Mark said, I don't know about that. Are you sure that's what you want to think? So I would run many things by Mark first, and together, we came up, I hope, I would say, with the right answer and the right approach to many issues that came up during the time he and I worked together. So I give Mark, again, a lot of credit for being more methodical in his thought processes and saying, I don't know, that's kind of flying on that one. And sometimes I did, and sometimes I followed his advice, but Mark's guidance helped this county look the way it is, and I appreciate that, I really do. He was very good at being straightforward on what he thought the rules were. In saying that, there's a resolution, Mark, that fortunately, it's not a poem, so you don't have to worry about any excruciating comments in the end here, but I'd like to read on behalf of the board, resolution, appreciation to Mark Currenton. Whereas Mark Currenton was born in Laurel Hill, Florida, a place in the panhandle where his family has lived for generations. Whereas Mark Currenton was a valedictorian of his high school class, which is usually a great accomplishment, but for Mark, he was just keeping up with his older brother and sister, who were also valedictorians over the classes before him. Whereas Mark Currenton earned a bachelor's degree in architecture from the University of Florida and a master's degree in planning from the University of Florida. Whereas Mark Currenton began working for Franklin County in December of 1988 and was the assistant county planner for twenty-eight years. During this time, Mark Currenton was not only the assistant planner, but also assisted with almost every ever task of the director of administrative services, planner Alan Pierce during his tenure. That's more true than I want to admit. Mark also filled in when needed as interim director of administrative services and planner during the periodic breaks in Mr. Pierce's service, which unfortunately happened from time to time during hurricane season. I will also say, which is not in here, he also was served as assistant mayor of the city of Apachaco, which he was not elected to do, and which he did with great resistance when every time, when I was the mayor and happened to be out of the office and some city complaint came in, Mark was sort of stuck with saying, oh, he's not here, come back. But he did a great job with that. Whereas Mark was promoted to county planner in October 2016 and has served this position ever since. Whereas Mark has performed many other roles outside of his designated planning position over his thirty-six years of service and has made a positive lasting impact on Franklin County with his relentless pursuit of various transportation, historic preservation, and park grant funding opportunities, and the subsequent administration and completion of those same projects and improvements once awarded. Mark has also served on various volunteer service boards within the community, including the Apachaco Historical Society, the Three Services and Statue Committee, and the Franklin County Bull and Water Conservation Board. Now, therefore, it be resolved by the Franklin County Board of County Commissioners to sincerely thank Mark Currenton for thirty-six years of service he has given to Franklin County and this community. He will truly be missed, and we wish him all the best in his retirement. This resolution adopted, it's the sixteenth day of July, 2024. Ricky Jones signed it. Thank you, Mark Currenton. You want to come up?
Before we do this, I want to, do I have a motion to approve this resolution?
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Ward, seconded by Commissioner Sanders. Any discussion? All in favor? That's unanimous. Sir, thank you for everything you do on behalf of Franklin County.
Thank you.
You will be missed. Mr. Pierce touched on it, but as a board, we can try to direct a lot of things, but staff is the job, though. We can pursue grants or say we want to chase this grant or that grant, but it's the staff of this county that actually makes sure that those grants are pursued. Like you mentioned, that the paperwork's done right, so we're not going to get audited and have to pay it back. And, you know, I just want to remind the public how tremendous it is. So this year, during this budget year, we had a $96 million budget. Sixteen million was adware on taxes. The other eighty were grants and special funds. That's where staff comes in. Thank you very much for all you do.
I really don't have anything to say, other than don't believe everything Alan Pierce says.
Let's get a picture of the board.
Yeah, please.
And Mark, while you're lining up for the picture, all your past.
He can't go to the flat, right now. I get close.
See, you walk side by side.
Oh, sorry, Ms. Sherr.
I got it.
Oh, okay, Mark. Why don't you get a picture with Aaron and Allen?
Yeah.
Y'all need staff to get it.
It might be normal.
Trying to get them.
Mr. Chairman, I just, I just want to say, I've been on the board going all four years, and I think not long after I was elected, the first, one of the first people I went to go see was Mr. Currenton, just to get his knowledge base of the county and the layout and everything, and I talked to him about grants, and his knowledge is insurmountable. It's just amazing how long and how much Mr. Currenton knows about this county, every little, literally nook and cranny. And I want to thank you for every time I've called or come into your office, you've taken the time, talked to me, educated me, and I know that the public has done the same, and the other Commissioners have done the same, so I appreciate your service to Franklin County for all these years and their knowledge base.
Thank you.
It's irreplaceable. Nothing against anybody that's going to fill the shoes, but they are definitely big shoes to fill, so.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Mr. Chairman, can I say something? I've known you for a long time, Mark.
Yes, ma'am.
We went through many a battle, we, all of us. So, I mean, one thing I've got to tell you, enjoy your retirement. Do the things that you want to do, so at the end of your life, you look back and say, I did exactly what I wanted to do. Don't sit around and waste your time. You do what you want to do.
I'm trying.
He might be writing a book, so he's doing good.
Well, y'all know.
Makes it live on forever.
Mark, we didn't get a whole bunch of time together, but I have watched you from afar for years. I've watched you walk down that sidewalk many times. I know a lot of people don't live on this side of the river, but you see Mark strutting down that sidewalk with that hat on, going to work dedicated to Franklin County, and I appreciate it, and thank you on behalf of the county for everything you've done.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Mr. Currenton, I also watched you myself. I actually followed you one day. You didn't know it. I was a, I was a city cop then. I was like, who's this guy? I passed every morning, walking with this hat on and a lunchbox. I followed you all the way to the courthouse, and I figured out who you were. I've only worked with you for six months, and, you know, I had a conversation with you, but for those six months, you have, you have. You were able to give me knowledgeable information, and although I didn't know you this, you know, this whole thirty-six years, oh, thirty-six years old, so I didn't know you. But thirty-six years is a long time, and just from talking with you and being able to sit down with you and looking at your work, you know, I knew you was an asset to this county, and I hate losing good people. You truly are a good person and a good asset to this county. Thank you.
Of the different stuff, I'm sure you won't, you won't miss me coming and asking you for updates on projects, especially when it's outside of our wheelhouse, or they're waiting on the state to sign off on a permit, or we're waiting on some other federal agency or some thing else to happen that's really beyond our control, especially during COVID. Well, that was like a really fun time. Everything stopped, you know, but just echoing what the board has already said, the ability to have someone that we could go and talk to that would ground us in reality about where things can go and should go concerning projects in the county or different grants we're pursuing, because, you know, you can find a number of grants, but are you going to be able to actually achieve the paperwork it takes to get them submitted? So you've always been a tremendous asset to Franklin County, a tremendous asset to me personally, and thank you for that, Mark.
You're welcome. I'm glad to do it.
I'm not sure why you're standing so close to the door, you know.
Who's moving right on, isn't it?
Yes, yes, they are.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Mark's very shy. I don't think he likes this sort of platform, but he definitely deserves it, for sure.
Yes, he does. So now we're going to move on to public comment. I do have several cards that are asking to speak under agenda items, so I will hold those off until those agenda items. Ms. Barbara Sanders, you're up first.
I haven't had some public comments yet.
Okay. All right. Mr. Al Stone, is he in the audience? See if he's attending by Zoom, Mr. Murrell.
Okay. Mrs. Stone, if you're attending by Zoom, it doesn't appear that way, but please indicate by raising your hand.
His number ends in thirteen forty-one.
Yeah, there's no phone number, sir. Yeah, everybody else, everybody's locked in from a smartphone.
Okay. All right.
Okay.
Then we'll move on to Ms. Jennifer Daniels' report.
Morning Commissioners. Jenny asked me to send her apologies. She had a family emergency last night, so she's unable to attend this morning, so I'll be sitting in her place. We only have one action item this morning, and it's the board signing and approval of our EMPA grant. It's the Emergency Management Assistance and Preparedness Grant. It's the grant that we have from the state every year. It's the one that helps us fund our salaries and communications.
Okay. Any questions, Commissioners? If not, what's the pleasure of the board?
So moved.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Anderson, seconded by Commissioner Crone. Any discussion, Commissioners? All in favor? All in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous. Anything else?
That's all I have for y'all.
Commissioners, do y'all have anything on behalf of Ms. Daniels for, Ms. Amson? Thank you so much, we really appreciate it.
Thank you, Commissioners.
All right. Ms. Aaron, do we, that bid opening has a time. Does that mean we have to wait to do it then, or?
No, we actually open the bids right now.
That's it? That's what's up?
Commissioner, the first bid will be from Pygget Asphalt and Site Work LLC. They're located at 12 Asphalt Way, Rockerville, Florida.
Okay. Again, Pygget Asphalt and Site Work LLC, total base bid $517,865.20. And the bid bond is attached. The next bidder is CW Roberts Contracting Incorporated, 22574 Northeast State Road 20 in Hossford, Florida. Again, CW Roberts Contracting Incorporated. Total base bid $719,404.30. Total base bid $719,404.30. And the base bid is included. And this is actually for the Hickory Dip Road Resurfacing Project. Okay, this next one is from Extreme Land Restoration LLC, P.O. Box 476 in Lynn Haven, Florida. Extreme Land Restoration LLC, Lynn Haven. Total base bid $659,108.37. And the last bidder is North Florida Construction Incorporated, P.O. Box 129 from Clarksville, Florida. North Florida Construction Incorporated. Total base bid $553,603.80.
The last two have a bid bond, Ms. Aaron.
Oh, goodness, sorry.
That one and the one before, you never mentioned it.
Yes, bid bond was included for North Florida and. Yes, bid bond was included for Extreme Land Restoration LLC.
Okay. What's the, who are we turning it over for review?
We will actually release this over to Dewberry Engineers.
Okay. All right. Pleasure of the board.
We have a motion to turn it over to Dewberry and let him come back with a recommendation.
Okay. So we have a motion by Commissioner Sanders, second by Commissioner Krum to turn these bids into Dewberry so they can come back to a recommendation for us on who's going to get awarded this contract. Any discussion before we vote? All in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous. All right. Ms. Griffin, up to you.
Okay.
Okay, Commissioners, first action item. Engineers are now ready for the county to send the 18-month licensing agreements out to beachfront property owners for the countywide dune restoration project. The attached letter requests permission from the property owners to allow the project contractor to access their property for the sole purpose of completing the planting at no cost to the property owner. Attached to the letter will be an illustration depicting the project areas and a typical planting profile. The designated planting zone is expected to occupy a maximum of 10 feet of crossshore width within the existing dune systems. Construction is anticipated to begin in the spring of 2025, prior to the commencement of sea turtle nesting season on May 1st. The contractor will likely access the project area through existing public beach access points and traverse along the beach to reach the designated planting zone on beachfront property owners' lots. In some instances, access limitations may require the contractor to briefly cross a property from the upland side. To grant the temporary access, the execution of a temporary construction access easement is required. The attached licensing agreement outlines the terms and conditions of access. The agreement must be signed by the property owner for the property to be able to be included in the Dune Vegetation Planting Initiative. The easement will expire in 18 months following the issuance of the project's notice to proceed. The licensing agreements must be executed and received by the coastal engineers by August 31st, 2024 for a property to be included in the project. Board action to approve and authorize the chairman to sign the attached letter to be sent along with the licensing agreement to all beachfront property owners in the project area.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Amson.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Krum. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous. Ms. Griffin?
Okay, next item. Attached are two letters to the Department of Environmental Protection as part of the dune restoration efforts at the county park location on St. George Island. The first letter requests a reduction in the permitting fee to $100 due to the county being classified as a rural area of opportunity. The second letter informs FDEP that the county has no objection to the proposed project at the county park location as it is seaward of the coastal construction control line. Board action to approve and authorize the chairman to sign the attached two letters to FDEP for the Restore Countywide Dune Restoration Project.
So moved.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Ward.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Sanders. Any discussion, Commissioners? Seeing none, all in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous.
Next action item, the Historic Preservation Grant. The Tourist Development Council was awarded a Historic Preservation Grant in the amount of $188,500 for the exhibits needed for the Maritime Museum at Buddy Ward's Seafood Landing Park. In June of last year, the board approved the contracts with the various vendors to complete the necessary exhibits, historical research, and displays. The vendor agreements expired on June 30th, and the attached amendments will extend the agreements through September 30th, 2024 for the Appalachia Cola Bay Chamber of Commerce, the Franklin's Promise Coalition, Coastal East Solutions, and Bay Media. At this time, Mark is working on one additional vendor contract amendment with Forgotten Coast TV, which will also include a change in scope. This amendment should be available by the next meeting for consideration. Board action to approve and authorize the chairman to sign the contract amendments for the four vendors above for the TDC's Maritime Museum Project.
So moved.
I have a motion to approve by Commissioner Krum.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Ward. Any discussion before we vote, Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. When was this grant applied for?
This one was actually applied for in the same funding cycle that the Caribou Beach Wayside Park, that same project. So I believe it was about. Two years ago. Probably two years ago.
It seems like we applied at the end of 2022, but we haven't noticed an award maybe in March of last year? March or April, wasn't it?
I think it is, it was about a year, a year ago that we actually issued the vendor contracts. So in June of last year, I think we issued the vendor contracts.
But the actual grant was applied for by TDC.
Correct.
Yes.
Yep.
I think that was, that preceded when I got here, is what I'm, so I've been trying to play catch up with it. But what I don't understand is, is that TDC applied for the grant, and they're getting admin fees for it, correct? I mean, they're going to get administrative monies to apply the grant.
Yes, the Appalachia Cola Bay Chamber of Commerce, I believe, was also included. Let me see if they had their, we had an amendment for them as well. Oh, okay, I did miss them, actually. Yes, the Appalachia Cola Bay Area Chamber of Commerce was also included, but it says here to provide project management, exhibit acquisition, and historic photography and videography research. So yes, they were supposed to do that, so. So I do need to give them that, actually, where they are included in the action item as well.
What I'm kind of rolling up on is, is we're almost a year here to where our staff is still doing extra work that should be handled by other entities. I mean, we sit here and talk about how we're overburdened with staff. Aaron, now, especially with Mark leaving, fixing to take bigger roles, having the coverage. You don't have time to sit here. And I mean, if they're going to apply for the grant, they need to do the late work. That's the only comment I've got. I'm not against having the, extending the contracts. I'm just saying, moving forward, we need to keep that in mind. But that's just my thoughts on it. But anyway, go ahead, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
No, you're good. This is, listen, this is the time we can all talk to each other. We can't talk in the back rooms. But the, has there ever been a time that TDC's applied for grants before? Commissioner Sanders, do you remember? I think it was kind of new for us, wasn't it?
It was, actually. I know Cindy was kind of the lead person, I think, that had actually completed most of the grant application. Yeah.
No, don't get me wrong. I mean, I'm all for getting grants and grabbing, but, you know, last year, if I'm not mistaken, and y'all know this as well, but Ms. Griffin has spent tremendous amount of hours working on a TDC spending plan. Again, something that should be handled. But it fell back on county staff to pick up the ball and run with it. My thing is, is, you know, if I'm not mistaken, we also have a lot of carryover money, carryover money with TDC. We're trying to figure out ways to spend it. Why are we going and grabbing grants when we don't, we can't even spend what we got? You see where I'm getting at? That's where my mind's at. I'm just trying to make sense of it. But, but anyway. We can move on.
We did, we did actually receive a grant extension as well. So the grant will actually expire December 31st of this year. So the vendor contracts have been extended through September 30th to hopefully allow for time for closeout.
Thank you, Ms. Griffin. Any additional discussion before we vote? All in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous.
Okay, Commissioners, and the next section is actually going to start with the supplemental portion of my report. So I don't know if, do we want to call for a public comment or anything first, or how does that?
Go ahead.
Okay. Okay, okay. Action item number four, it's going to be the county budget update, budget workshop schedule, and public hearing dates. The budget workshops have been scheduled for Thursday, July 25th, and Friday, July 26th. Upon conclusion of those meetings, the B.O.C.C. will authorize a millage rate that will go out on the trim notices. The proposed millage rate that appears on the trim notice will be the maximum rate for the upcoming fiscal year, barring rare circumstance. Currently, budget requests are still coming in. And the 2024 taxable value, as certified by the Franklin County Property Appraiser, increased by approximately 13.91% over the prior year. The budget workshop schedule is attached, and the preliminary budget request will be uploaded to the county website for review in the agenda link for the workshop. The school board will hold their final hearing on their budget on Wednesday, September 18th, 2024. Franklin County is the next taxing authority by order of priority to set the scheduled hearing dates. Board action to approve Tuesday, September 3rd, 2024, for the first public hearing and Tuesday, September 17th, 2024, as the final public hearing dates for the 2024-2025 county budget. And those public hearings will be held at 5:15 p.m.
Those are your meeting dates for September.
So that would be, you know, board action to approve those dates.
Okay.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Sanders. Second by Commissioner Amson to set these dates for Tuesday, the 3rd of September and Tuesday, the 17th of September, 2024, starting at 5:15 p.m.
Correct.
Any discussion before we vote? All in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, do you want an explanation from Aaron or myself, the difference between the workshops we have coming up next week, Thursday and Friday? I think it's next week. Versus the public hearings that we're talking about in September?
Yeah.
For the public or for the board?
That would be good.
Want to go ahead?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, the budget workshops are actually where the board will actually interact with the department heads and also the constitutional officers. From there, we will actually put together your budget, and that will actually establish the rate that will go out on the trim notices. The public hearings are, will actually be, at that point in time, you will either adopt that millage or actually, you know, make any sort of reductions to the millage as well. Now, whatever goes out on the trim notices, you cannot go any higher than that rate. So, you know, please keep that in mind. The rare circumstance would be such as, you know, natural disasters, things of that nature. But yes, the budget workshops is your time to actually work with your departments and your constitutional officers and to come up with a rate that you are comfortable with for those trim notices.
All right. Go ahead, Ms. Griffin.
Next action item is item number five, the Sheriff's Department Law Enforcement Salary Assistance Agreement. The Florida Legislature has approved the third-year funding of law enforcement salary assistance for fiscally constrained counties in efforts to bring the pay of law enforcement more in line with larger/better funded counties and state law enforcement. As part of the grant agreement, the Sheriff's Department is required to submit a spending plan to FDLE to outline how the funds will be allocated to eligible employees. In the attached spending plan from the sheriff's office, the $539,122 annual allocation will be distributed as followed. The attached plan, as submitted by the sheriff's office, will use the funds to increase law enforcement, including detention deputy staff, annual-based salary by $6,000 per year for ranked staff, and $7,752 per year for unranked staff. It should be noted by all recipients of this grant-funded salary assistance program that there is no guarantee of how long these funds will be provided by the state of Florida, and that each employee should be mindful of that fact. Additionally, it should be noted that should the retirement rates change during this grant, that the salary supplement amount will change accordingly. One item to note, with this law enforcement salary assistance grant provided to Franklin County, the starting salary as set by the Evergreen Pay Plan, $38,211, plus the grant-funded law enforcement salary assistance of $7,752 for a newly hired deputy or corrections officer, will bring the base salary to $45,963. Effective October 1st, 2024, the starting salary for deputies and corrections officers as set by the Evergreen Pay Plan will change to $40,222. The starting salary plus the grant-funded law enforcement salary assistance of $7,752 will bring the base salary to $47,974.11 for newly hired deputies and corrections officers in the upcoming budget year. Board action to grant approval and authorization to the chairman to sign the attached law enforcement salary assistance agreement with the Florida Department of Law Enforcement for the Franklin County Sheriff's Department.
So moved.
So we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Ward.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Krum. And you know what? I completely forgot a minute ago. Do we have anybody in the, of the public here that wants to comment on this, since it was added to our agenda last night? Do we have any public comment? Mr. Wrong, ask about on Zoom, please.
Anyone attending by Zoom would like to comment on this item, indicate by raising your hand.
All right. Any discussion before we vote, Commissioners?
So if this grant is taken away or not allocated next year, the salary will go back down to $40,222?
Correct. At that time, you know, that would actually.
October 1st.
Correct. Yes. Now, one thing to note, you know, this is actually the third year that the state has done this, and the only counties that are eligible to receive this funding is those that are fiscally constrained. And to be fiscally constrained, you know, basically, the value of one mil, I believe a taxable value of $5 billion is required. So for us, we're a good bit away from that. I think we still have about, almost a billion dollars to go in taxable value before we would actually exceed that threshold. So this is a new program. It is the third year that they've done it, and I don't anticipate them getting rid of it anytime soon.
This is the result of many, many years lobbying legislature about physically constrained counties. And we have been very, very lucky that our legislative delegations have listened to us. So we are classified, as you learned, Commissioner Krum, at the, at the fact conference. There's 30-something counties that's physically constrained. So this is just one of the ways it helped. Because when the legislature gets there, they can especially do something for the physically constrained counties that the larger counties, you know, don't participate in. So that's a good thing. Took many, many years to get here, though.
But it is something to be aware of, should they decide to stop funding. And it's built, kind of built in there. It's, yeah, it's a lot to, a lot to keep your finger on, for sure.
Mr. Chairman, I got a question, too.
Yes.
The, so, Aaron, talking about when it comes to the budget.
The, so, Aaron, talking about when it comes to the budget, I see that the Evergreens already, uh, got it at $40,222, and with this brings it up to 47, almost 48,000. How, how is that accu, how is this placed in our budget? So the, the 500, what is it, 500 something thousand dollars? How does that come into our budget so that we can, uh, budget appropriately?
That is actually part of the sheriff's budget.
Okay.
Yeah, so the 539,000, yeah, so that actually, um, you know, granted, the county is actually, um, of course, the grant award recipient. Um, however, the checks, when they come in, they are actually sent over to the sheriff's department. So, you know, he receives those funds, those are his grant funds on his side, um, and actually, I will be revising his budget form to actually, um, reflect that as well, because that's one thing, you know, with the spending plan and it actually impacting base pay of the employees, honestly, it should be, there should be another column in there to actually reflect the grant aw, the grant award amount in there.
That was my question, too, because it doesn't come back. I mean, I, like you said, I'm sure, hoping, hopefully, this will not ever go away, but if it does, I just want to make sure that we, as a county, are, are, um, we know what to do from that moment on.
Yes, yeah, correct.
Well, that's what I was going to ask. I was going to ask how, how this was going to affect the budget he had set in for this upcoming year, so that's a good answer.
All right. Any additional discussion before we vote? All in favor?
Uh.
Any opposed? That's your end. Anything else, Ms. Griffin?
That's it, yeah.
And Commissioners, anyone have anything for Ms. Griffith while we're still on her report?
Mr. Chairman, I've got something, and it's probably going to go kind of on yours and Michael's. Um, I know I talked in the past about getting together with the department directors about some maybe, uh, I don't want to say discrepancies, but some, some issues with Evergreen for, for the next budget year coming up. And I just want to make sure we're still on, on course with that. I know you might be waiting until after the budget workshop, so we kind of have a num, some numbers laid out. So I just want to make sure that we're still on, on course with that, and, um, I'll, you know, if you have dates, get with me, I'll, I'll be happy to set aside some time to come sit with everybody.
Yeah.
Because I know we have talked about that before. Um, and then there's, um, one more thing. The, so, I've, I've been a big advocate, uh, I always have been, for our county employees. I want to make sure that, moving forward, I feel like me personally, and I, I'm not speaking on behalf of the board, but I'm sure they're in agreement, anybody that gets any kind of certification or any kind of, um, I don't know, credential, I feel like they need to be compensated. And I know we've discussed that before. Um, so is there a way that we can, and I know we talked about line items in our budget, and I know we've mentioned this before, is there a way we could put a line item in our budget? I know we discussed Evergreen and the new thing we're going to probably do with things like that, but I want to make sure that if anybody in any time of the budget cycle of the year gets a credential or an advancement or a certification, I want to make sure that they're compensated for that appropriately. Is that something that we can add as a line item in our upcoming budget for?
Um, we can, I mean, basically with the county departments, you know, it, it's not that often, you know, so even if the certification value was $1,500, you know, $2,500, you know, whatever it, it may be, um, you know, we've had the ability to act, you know, with staff turnover and such, where that hasn't had such a detrimental effect on the department.
Okay.
Um, for example, like with, uh, Fond, I believe there's a landfill manager certification. Um, there's also, um, let's see, I believe, let me see, some of the other, uh, actually, Angela with her flood certification, you know, that was done a couple of years ago when she got that. Um, yeah, so it, it's kind of been just kind of, you know, hit or miss for us on this, this side. Um, but really, most of the departments likely will have enough funds to be able to cover any sort of increase like that.
Okay.
Yeah, so, so we have, if you guys remember a couple of years ago, we, uh, Evergreen came in, uh, there were three things we wanted them to work on with the board commissioners. Is one, a certification program and giving weight and a certain amount of money to each, all the different types of certifications that we have going on. Commissioner Jones had even talked about getting our mechanics, is it A S E, sir?
Yes.
A S E certified, which would help and, and give them money for that. So we have that program, and then we'll set us, we could, uh, have a better estimate as to what we're, we're looking at. The, the other thing Evergreen was going to do is create the, uh, program where the department heads can do annual reviews, and these annual reviews will go into the database in the cloud that we will have, and so we will be able, and it'll estimate, you know, keep track of it, estimate. So again, when it comes time to end of the year, in addition to any cost of living, any inflation, uh, increases you might give, you can also give an annual, uh, uh, increase for good performance, outstanding performance, whichever, whatever term you want to use.
Yeah, okay.
There was, those, there was a third thing that they were going to do for us, and it escapes me right now, but there were three different programs we talked about with Evergreen, and they will be here next fiscal year, because this is the last year of the five-year pay plan. You did two years last year, so you have one more year to go, that begins October 1st. And then, I think, cost of living, I think that was the other thing, too.
Yes.
Some kind of estimate that you could build into the budget. So it's not at the end of the budget you're here discussing, you know, what we're going to do, you know, how, no, there would be a cost of living line item in there to give it a fair estimate, so the board is aware of it as you compile your budget, especially during workshops.
Did, uh, Evergreen ever do all this, those three things?
They do that starting next year, October 1st, Commissioner, yes.
Yeah, but Commissioner Cream, the, when we had the discussion four years ago to do, well, what prompted the discussion, Commissioner Likely brought it up, was the Florida voters voted on the $15 an hour minimum wage. This is going to take effect by 2026. So we started down this road of trying to do an adjustment, not just to the bottom up like it's been done before, and compress our wages, but actually move everybody up, because the bottom has to be at $15 an hour. So when we were looking at it, uh, just giving you some history so you'll know, when we're looking at it, the, if we tried to fund it all in one year, we, we would have been going up in our millage rate, and nobody on the board wanted to do, even attempt to do that.
1.5 million.
So, yeah, so it was one and a half million to do it all in one year, to implement it. Uh, so we spread it out over five years, where last year, we paid for two years at once, to try to shorten that time up, so we could move to the next step that Mr. Marron's mentioning, and that's trying to start having the, the evaluations and the certifications and the cost of living, different stuff, uh, just to try to, to keep it on a level playing field. But that's what prompted the discussion, was the $15 minimum wage. Because before, so before years ago, before that, the starting salary for a county employee was $25,000. That was where it started at. So they weren't raking in the dough, they were making $25,000, uh, you know, so, yes, it's going to move us up some from there, but that's, just so you'll know, that's where it started at. Any additional discussion? On that, or anything else from Ms. Griffith before we move on?
Thank you.
Just didn't want to cut nobody off. All right, uh, Mr. Marron?
Okay. Well, Commissioners, you have a number of speaker cards in front of you for this item.
Yes.
I don't know if you want to go to that first.
Yes.
I mean, everyone, if there are speaker cars, speaker cards, then pretty much everyone has read my narrative, that my bullet points in front of you, so we might want to start with the speaker cards and then go straight into discussion. If you have questions, then we can go from there.
No problem. Uh, Ms. Sanders, Barbara Sanders, you're up first.
Mr. Chairman, before public comment, ma'am?
Yes.
Just wanted to inform the board that after hours last night, I received a formal letter of objection from the law firm representing, um, the landings. They seem to think that the purpose of this morning's conversation is for the board to make a substantive, or to have a substantive discussion, uh, on the merits regarding the land development code. And I'm paraphrasing here, I'm not reading exactly. Um, so my advice to the board is, we don't comment back on public comment. I mean, you receive public comment, but we don't have a discussion. And then the other matter is, Mr. Marron's report is seeking a ministerial decision from the board whether to schedule a public hearing or not, to consider the matter set forth in his report. And so my advice is that you limit yourself just to that ministerial question only. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Ms. Sanders?
Good morning, Barbara Sanders. Um, in reference to Mr. Marron's report, which I guess he'll read to you after we all talk about it, um, I want to give a little story. When the landings first, PUD first came up, Rebecca Chitana and I went to see Mark Currington and asked him to explain it to us, because how do you, how, what do we, what rules are we using to address whether this PUD complies with anything? And he told me the story about it being repealed and Allen's ideas that, oh, we can always just later on, uh, adopt a PUD, and I'm like, but what are the rules? We don't have a survey to show their land, and they're talking about more land than they bought. We don't have a title insurance policy to show who actually owns it. Um, it, it's vague, and so I'm here to support the adoption of a PUD enabling ordinance, if you don't want to stick by your earlier prohibition of PUDs. Uh, they have a place in land use, uh, zoning and, and planning. Um, what I want to talk about, though, is it needs to be a good ordinance, and it needs to have specifics. And if you want to do research and go look at other counties, Tallahassee, Leon, we'll call it, they're very specific. These are the things that the developer has to give to your planning office way before there's a public hearing. So what, what was happening with, it was like a free-for-all. We were coming to the P and Z meetings, not really knowing what the what was. I mean, we, we couldn't understand what they wanted. Oh, fuel, that's an incidental use, we find out at the, at the meeting. Oh, they may want to use submerged land, we find out at the meeting. Those are all things the developers should put in the PUD application upfront, so your staff can evaluate it properly, so that members of the public can say, oh, that's a good point, or, oh, no, no, you've, you violated the comp plan in that rule, or in that request. So I'm not opposed, I like the prohibition, but I mean, I get that you would then just default to zoning code, and there's not enough specifics in that probably, especially on your commercial zoning. Um, now, I am willing to sit down and work with Mr. Schuler, help him, work with him, bounce ideas. I think it needs to be collaborative, because while you don't want to stop a landowner from using their land, right, we don't want to take his development away from him, but you also don't want to adversely impact all the other people that you have a fiduciary duty to protect. So it's a, it's a tough balance. Um, I would throw in that the developer has to pay the freight for advertising public hearings, but that's just a little niggel on my part. It makes me mad, I'm having to pay for the rich guys advertising, sorry, Mr. Adlerstein. So that's the kind of, there, you, we can get nitpicky like that, but it, we, it's comprehensive. So developer comes in, we got a great PUD enabling ordinance, developer comes in, plops it on the new county planner's desk, and there's a checklist. Oh, well, you have this, you have this, you have this, okay, you're not violating any, any, uh, comp plan rules, okay, okay. Now, we give it to the public and the P and Z to look at and come and, and make comments on. So that's an orderly process that you guys are in charge of, and you need to do that. But I would ask to let, um, some of the public that, we've been looking at this, we've been looking all over at different ordinances, and it's a lot of work to draft these kinds of ordinances. It is not easy. I did it for 40 years for the school board. You can't just go steal Miami Dade and apply it to Franklin County. We have special, the Bay, we have our, you know, our oyster society, we, we have different rules here. So we need to work really hard on that enabling, um, legislation. Um, I object to what Mr. Pierce said back when he said it's okay to repeal this, because then we can just ad hoc do, um, PUDs. That's called spot zoning. There's some new case law out that says the comp plan must control, and that's where I would like to see us headed. And then we all know going into the game, what the rules are, you know, who the ref is, what the equipment is, and, and instead of this kind of blindly, oh, we're going to throw something out there, see if it sticks, oh, it didn't, let's try again, throw something else out there, it's time consuming for you, for your planning and zoning office, you couldn't even get a, a quorum of your board, and I'm retired. So I have things to do. I appreciate y'all making it an orderly process.
Thank you, Ms. Barbara.
Commissioners, Attorney Schuler, I'm John Alper, resident of Apalachicola, and another retired but still intrusive lawyer, uh, voicing an opinion here. So I believe that, uh, ordinance, um, 201804 is wise in one respect, and that wise part of it ought to be retained. I think it's wise as it concerns developments, high-density developments in coastal high-hazard areas. Now, why? Why is that wise? Well, in hurricane after hurricane, we have learned the lesson, that density is disastrous. In coastal high-hazard areas, density is disastrous, and county after county and municipality after municipality around the state has taken heed of that and severely restricted or prohibited high-density developments in coastal high-hazard areas. Now, if the commission is determined to do a planned unit development ordinance, then in my view, it's imperative, as Ms. Sanders said, that the commission enact an ordinance that lays out the approval criteria and, um, the constraints that would apply to any development, for the reasons that she said. And there are many good examples of planned unit development, uh, ordinances from around the state, and from counties that are in very similar circumstances to Franklin County. We can draw upon those and identify best practices to apply here in Franklin County. Now, as Ms. Sanders said, that can involve a lot of work, but you have resources, the county and the county attorney have resources and folks who've already done a lot of looking that can contribute their findings in, uh, language that they've found from around the state that may apply to this. Um, and the county should, um, not try to push through some interim solution to spot zone or do site-specific zoning. And why do I say that? There's no rush, first of all. There's no rush. There is time to be deliberate about it, no matter what planned unit development is pending. And why do I say that? There's time, because there is no high-density planned unit development possible in coastal high-hazard areas under our comprehensive plan. No mix of commercial, residential, mixed-use, none of it, that permits high-density developments. Our comp plan is like a constitution. The authority to do this kind of land use descends from chapter 163 of the Florida statutes through our comp plan, which is like a constitution. It enables and empowers the, the county to enact ordinances for particular land uses. Um, and our comp plan does not permit high-density development in coastal high-hazard areas. At most, through any combination of residential and commercial, you get 4.3 units per acre. So there's no rush to develop a planned unit development ordinance for any pending proposal. Spot zoning is not a solution here. In fact, I think it's a risk. If the county does not get a general ordinance and enacts a spot zoning ordinance or a site-specific ordinance, I think it's an invitation for a lawsuit. It's an invitation for a lawsuit, and this, in recent times, developments, these developments are contentious enough that I think you may get one. And if you get one, um, because of the recent authority that Ms. Sanders pointed out, and because of, you know, very widespread authority about the controlling nature, the constitutional nature of a comprehensive plan, I think you would lose that lawsuit. So it behooves the county to be very careful and deliberate here, and if you're looking for help in that effort, I think you'll find it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Alper. Ms. Susan Anderson? Ms. Susan Anderson.
My name is Susan Anderson, and I am here speaking on behalf of the Apalachicola River Keepers Organization. I am the new, but not new to the organization, executive director. It was good to see Allen Pierce this morning. I worked with Allen many years ago when I worked for the Department of Community Affairs and when I first began helping organize the Apalachicola River Keeper, which is a sole purpose of looking comprehensively and ecosystem-wide to exactly why Apalachicola is such an attractive place for not only the natural communities that are diverse and inhabit here and support the people, but all of the people who want to come here. And that's sort of a catch-22 situation, because protection and preservation and restoration of the resources that we all love and depend on can be endangered and jeopardized by the attractiveness of these resources. And we're growing. We're growing quickly. We are growing intensely, and while we still see ourselves as a small community, the broader world doesn't. They see us as a destination. And Apalachicola River Keeper is here for the sole purpose of looking at that broad ecosystem-wide consequence, the impacts that we see from the actions we take on the environment we will have to live with forever, our children will have to live with. I come from a family who's lived here for generations, and I am sure our family will be living here for many more generations. So I have a personal interest in that. I watched my uncles throwing their cast nets on the bay and how that beautiful circle landed in places where they knew the fish were going to be. That kind of knowledge, that kind of culture, that kind of heritage is something we all love here. We all know, we all feel it in a place in our hearts. And I helped form this organization 25 years ago because I saw the gaps. I worked with state agencies, I worked with Allen Pierce. I saw the gaps we had in our ability to see that comprehensive picture and to understand how we could work together to make sure that what we did in the future would support the long-term health of our ecosystem. So I come before you today to say that our organization has a contact of supporters of over 7,500 members and supporters. We are in constant communication with them. We work with universities, we work with professionals, we work with hydrologists all the time to give us a better understanding of exactly how we are to act on behalf of the mission of our organization. I'm here to let you see my face, and I've met some of you, but introduce myself and our organization as your partner. As you've heard from the attorneys this morning, we want to participate with you for the betterment of this ecosystem and the people it serves. And it's my honor to be a part of that mission and to get to know and work with each of you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Ms. Dottie Thornburg.
Good morning. Good morning. My name's Dottie Thornburg. I live on St. George and have been there since 1999. I know Ms. Sanders had a very viable solution for the long term. I'd like to speak to the short term, the definition of the project of the landings, specifically that one PUD. Three divided categories. One, the project is incompatible for our area. It denigrates the quality of life of people that live on the island. I know none of y'all live on the island, but did you go to the July 4th water parade by any chance? No? The accident on the bridge was one of the things that we have been fearing for a long time, and I think several of you have commented about the dangerous and critical spot that the landings is on. That is our only way in and only way off. That is our evacuation route, the only one. When that bridge was shut down, the emergency vehicles were not able to get to the person. What if it had been a multi-car pileup? What if it had been during, people rushing during the hurricane? It's the position of the PUD that's absolutely the most dangerous and irresponsible place of the whole island that it could have been built. The second area is the unspecified unanswered questions that are in this PUD. I know, I realize that a PUD is usually just a big conglomerate of ideas, and they can do whatever they want to inside that plan. That's the scary part of a PUD. You are giving them a blank check. A 150-room hotel, 10 wet slips, 200 dry slips, 33 residential condo units around the dry storage barn, 10,000 square feet of commercial retail space, 12 single-family residences, a three-story restaurant. Really? I mean, that is, like I said, it's dangerous to put all of those spaces, people, high-density in that particular area. It doesn't comply with current zoning, it doesn't comply with regulations, it doesn't comply with any of the standards. I'd like to read the definition for people to, the commissioners to deny permits and PUDs. Standards are issued with State of Florida, the nature of the proposed item. Number one, the compatibility of the proposed use with the surrounding areas and land use. Check. It doesn't, it's not compatible. The input of persons residing in the community regarding the proposed use and community opposition. Man, you've got opposition. The cumulative effect of the proposed use in the community. Got that. Whether the, under the circumstances, the particular application, the establishment and maintenance of the operation will be incongruent with the safety, the peace, the morals, or comfort of the general wherefore, welfare of the people residing in this area. And not last but least, failure to satisfy any of the criteria set forth in the subdivision and constitutes the basis for a complete denial. This is the state of Florida. You can deny a permit, you can deny that PUD because of all these reasons. That's all I have to say. Obviously, I'm against this particular PUD, and I am against any large development that ruins the quality of life from the islanders. Like I've said, we've been here since 1999. We've seen a lot of change, some good, some bad. This is not a good idea for the island. And although you are each individually responsible for your voters in your district, your district realizes that if this one is built here on the island, they could be in their backyard, and they're not happy. They're disgruntled, they're frustrated, they can't believe that this is up again. They feel like the commissioners are using the island as a cash cow. Well, ladies and gentlemen, you are killing the cow. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Ms. Dottie.
Teresa Sporn, I live on St. George. I've been here a long time, long enough to watch how ordinances and planning and zoning gets ignored. You can look at Harry Hayes and see that. At first, they just wanted to put a tin shed over the entry door so you could get in without getting wet. But then there was mud, so they poured some concrete. But then people liked sitting out there, so they thought, we'll screen it. And now it's temperature-controlled public dining, which gives you no space to park in front of it. So going down Bayshore trying to get off the island, you have to run a gauntlet, because the story is if you give them an inch, they'll take a mile. So I am for what Ms. Sanders said about, yeah, you need some PUDs, but put some teeth in it. Protect us. I don't want to be here clogging up your works, so take care of people like me who need y'all to have some rules that we understand, and don't let them push you around. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sporn. That was all the public comment. Ms. Moore?
Okay. So commissioners, do you need me to read the narrative? You guys have read it over, and basically, it's what we're asking, what I'm asking this morning, is just to authorize Attorney Schuler to go ahead, schedule a workshop, and create a draft ordinance. I would agree with some of the comments said this morning, with a procedure, with a checklist, like we have everything, like we have for everything else in the zoning and building department, and move forward. Now, do you want to entertain some sort of group, advisory group, to help with it so they feel, the citizens feel that they have some sort of input into this particular ordinance? That's the board's call. I have no objection to that. Staff never denies help in any way, you know?
Michael, I don't have any problem with that, and I don't want to hijack what we're talking about with this, what we're doing, but I just want to share with the rest of the commission, this further signifies we need to do, as a county, a different zoning district for St. George Island.
Oh, I agree.
You know, because at the end of the, the end of time, so what we're talking about this morning, what I understand we're talking about, is the fact that we do need, we have a PUD availability in our comp plan, so we need to have zoning ordinance for it.
Yes.
But I do agree with some of the sentiment this morning, there's no rush on it, across the county, if citizens want PUDs, that's fine. But, you know, I'm to the place, I've mentioned this a couple of times already, and I don't know what the pleasure of the board is, but I'm good with directing staff to come up with and start having discussions about this special zoning district for the island. And if the residents of the island, if it comes up that they don't want PUDs going forward, then we'll put it in the special zoning. You know, but that's something that needs to be decided. It doesn't need to be decided here just with us, you know, receiving a few comments and making a knee-jerk decision. I'm for what you're saying, and again, I'm not trying to hijack this discussion. It's appropriate, this is what's going on, is to direct staff to come up with some kind of plan, maybe some kind of working group. There's plenty of input from the island.
Yep.
We need that input. We need input from the civic association, we need input from the business association, and input from the residents. And, you know, we can come with a group of five to seven people, but we need to do something different about the zoning on the island. All these issues that keep popping up, it's, we're trying to fix the symptoms, not the problem.
Yes.
The problem is there's no overarching zoning for the island, so it's been just do whatever you want to for forever. But, you know, if we're going to do anything substantial about fuel, I think it's better to have that discussion as it relates to the island, as it affects the island, than it is to try to pass something, because other parts of the county are not the same. It's just not the same. They're not a barrier island trying to keep all the vegetation they can keep. I could go on and on, but I'm not trying to hijack this part of it. But, you know, in addition to what we're trying to do for, to have something back in the, on the books for PUDs, if we want to get a group to work to deal with that, I'm fine with that. I'm fine with whatever people want to do, we have input. We're not here trying to say that we 100% know what to do and we got it. But in addition to that, we need to not be talking about the zoning thing on the island, we need to be moving toward it.
Mr. Chairman? Mr. Chair?
I'm sorry. Commissioners, go first, but, Mr. Chairman, I need some guidance. Are we talking about authorizing a public hearing for the board to consider the repeal of 2018-04 and 87-4 as one item, and then talking about creating a procedural path to create this St. George Island overlay that you're talking about? I need some clarity of instruction from the board.
Yeah. So as I understood it, what Mr. Moore had in his action item today was to schedule a workshop. Is that not correct?
A public hearing.
Public hearing?
Yes.
Okay. So at this public hearing, are we going to have something that's actually ready? Or, I'll say this, it has nothing to do with the landings. This has to do with the fact that we currently don't have a PUD ordinance in Franklin County, and that was discovered based on input from some of the residents.
Yes.
Okay? I don't think any of us recalled that, because we've already passed a PUD since then, so we don't need to keep doing bad things. That's what we're talking about. But are we going to have a draft ready for the public hearing? Because a public hearing's not going to do us any good if we don't have what we're trying to accomplish.
Mr. Chairman, I can tell you, I cannot have a draft PUD-enabling ordinance ready by the next board meeting or any time in the near future. That's going to require a heavy lift with lots of planning advice.
Right.
Okay, so...
I agree with you. I think we need, at one time, I can't remember what the reason, but you hired a planner, I can't remember her name, I think we need assistance from a planner, experienced planner that can help us and guide us on both issues, both issues, commissioners, on this issue in front of us right now, in reference to PUD, to help us, like you've heard today, to develop a procedure, a checklist, and things that we say, okay, this eliminates you right away. You do this, this is not going to work. And, and commissioners, something specific, a specific zoning, similar, Commissioner Sanders to, like Atlantic Village, a specific zoning that applies to St. George Island. It's beautiful, it has real beaches, but it's still unique. It's a very unique place, and we need to take care of it.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
You want to be careful you don't get carted ahead of the horse, though.
Yep, that's true.
And that's what I'm talking about right there. This board has operated since 2018 without a PUD ordinance. You survived, you know? What?
Well, procedurally, I can tell you, we've never used the PUD-enabling ordinance. The only one we ever had was 87-4, and it was never approved by the governor and cabinet, and it was repealed in 2018 just to clean it off the books.
Cleaned out the books.
There have been a number of PUDs that the county has approved, and Mr. Carrington could be the one to give you that exact number, not myself, but I don't know, let's just, for purposes of discussion, say five or six PUDs that have been approved over the course of the last, you know, 25 or 30 years without using a PUD-enabling ordinance. Now, how the board chooses to proceed from this point forward, that obviously is a policy decision from the board, but I thought one of the issues on the table was to schedule a public hearing to repeal 87-04 and 2018-04, just to clarify this whole issue about PUDs being banned in the county. So I thought that was the ministerial question that was being discussed. The St. George Island overlay question, the last time we discussed just a limited overlay over the commercial district on St. George Island, it took about a year.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman?
So I think they are two different issues.
So, so right now, what we need, what I feel like the board, the direction of the board and attorneys trying to guide us is, one, we need to authorize him for a public hearing just to do this PUD ordinance, but I want also to do... But I, I want also to do a workshop so that we know and get public input about what a PUD needs to look like, or what, and I, I agree with the chairman that St. George Island should be separate, so we have multiple, this is a multifaceted issue. But one, one of the things we need to fix right now is what we have with your action item, is we need to, to eliminate and fix this first before, really, before we can proceed with anything else, correct?
That, that is the proposal as I understood it, but I understand the chairman also wants us to move forward with St. George Island overlay issue as well, so that's the workshop.
That's a separate item.
It is two separate items. Like I said, I wasn't trying to hijack it, because that's going to take a while. That's not going to happen quickly. Number one, we need a lot of input from the citizens there, the residents there.
Indeed.
And we need to come to some kind of consensus, because at the end of the day, whatever, it's an odd time, but none of us foresee that Mr. Carrington was about to resign either.
Tell me about it.
It's just a curveball. But, yeah, I'm not trying to make that different. But I do think, whatever the board wants to do with repealing this old ordinance, that's, I'm fine with having that public discussion, that public hearing. But I also understand, just from the limited input we've had today, should this board, and it might take some workshops to get there, consider the input from the public and have a PUD enabling ordinance on our books, so everybody knows what, what the playground, the surface is like. Everybody knows what they're looking for. So there's actually three different things we're discussing.
So, Mr. Chairman, do we need to, to do the public hearing, or should we just do a workshop?
Sounds more like a workshop to me.
But we can't really do a hearing, and, and you make a draft if we don't know what we're drafting or talking about, or what we want, right?
Well, what Attorney Schuler's trying to say is, this would authorize him to, for, it says a public, the problem is, Attorney Schuler, in, in what's printed, it says, "Board Action to Authorize a Public Hearing for a New PUD Ordinance." And you, you said something else a minute ago.
Yeah, it's in the paragraph bullet point just above that, an ordinance that would repeal both 87-04 and 18-04. That's what I was looking at. But I, I agree with you, the, the action item says what it says.
Yes, yeah.
So what good is a, Mr. Chairman, excuse me, what, what good is a public hearing for a PUD ordinance when we don't even know, or going to know what it says? Is that right? Or is this, it's really kind of confusing, because I know this is basically specific to this, you know, 80, the repeal of the 87-4 to 2018-04. But we also need to make basically a new...
Yeah, so Commissioners, you cannot, not cannot, I'm sorry, I apologize. You should not repeal 87-04 and 2018-04 without a plan.
Right.
So basically what I'm hearing, to get to that plan, you want to have workshops before you repeal the ordinance that's on the books. That, that's what I'm hearing right now. That's the direction we need to go in. And, as a separate matter, concurrently, the chairman is asking that the board also supports, he wants staff to bring a plan to him, also supports a plan to create a separate zoning for St. George Island. So we're, we're doing two separate things concurrently. Yes, they're kind of cousins, but still, they're, there's still a distance, separate. Kind of related there, but, you know.
So, and, and, Mr. Chairman, this, this committee, I'm all for the public, us having a committee or an advisory group, so to speak, to help, help facilitate this. I'm all for that as well. So I guess what we need to do is, and correct me if I'm wrong, is instead of authorizing a public hearing, we need to authorize a workshop. That's, I'm going to go ahead and make that motion.
I second that.
For, for number one.
You probably won't have that workshop now until October, because you have budget hearings all in September, unless you do it on an off night.
Well, we can, maybe in August? Can I?
We can try.
Can we? Okay, the next, the next meeting is in August.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, if I could?
Yes.
I'm scheduled to meet with, a phone conference with Alara Gutcher-Mills, the planner, Thursday at 2:00 PM, maybe once I get information from her, because we're now expanding the scope of what, we're, we're going to engage her to do, what one being the overlay one, the things we've already discussed. So maybe I should find out what her schedule is and let, talk to Mr. Morone, because I'm not sure how long this will take her to, you know, get prepared to present at a workshop.
So would, would you authorize a workshop with a date and time to be determined, and as soon as I hear from Attorney Schuler, I could, you know? It, it gives me some flexibility to just schedule a date once, a date that meets all your schedules that I could work on between now and then.
Yep.
I will try for, for, for August. I'll try my best for August.
I'm fine with that.
I'll, I'll make that my motion.
Okay.
So we have a motion on the floor in a second to give Mr. Morone the flexibility and coordination with Attorney Schuler and the planner that we're looking at hiring to find out her schedule and then schedule a public workshop on PUD ordinances or anything we're talking about putting on the books for Franklin County. The workshop would be for that purpose, and, and the time and date is yet to be determined.
Citizen?
Ms. Sanders, I'm sorry, you're very distracting. I'm trying to focus my thoughts, and I'm hearing you, and I'm trying to listen, but...
Let's, let's deal with the Citizens Advisory Group at the workshop.
Yes.
Okay.
Let's deal with that then, because we then, we then have the advice from the planner of how to move forward and how to form this advisory group.
And that was what I was going to say, too. I don't know if we need to make a motion or just make a direction so that we can determine how to, how to choose these individuals, because I know some that already might want to be on that board. But I want to make sure that we do that as well. So I don't really, we'll just can do that by direction, right, Chairman?
Mm-hmm.
And then, and then, in addition to that, and I was going to bring this up under Commissioner comments, but since the discussion is here, the City of Carabel just redid their whole land comp plan, their zoning, all, all that kind of stuff, and they had someone from the University of Florida, Go Gators, do it. And so I was going to reach out to her tomorrow and see kind of what that entailed. I know we've got a, a land use attorney, and I know we've got some kind of a plan of how to move forward with all that, but I thought it would be, it would be, it would behoove me and us to, to look into that, to see how they can maybe help in the process.
Fair enough.
So I was going to get with her tomorrow on that, and then, another thing, Mr. Chairman, is, is I, I agree with you. I think that St. George Island needs to be a specific, special district in and of itself. So I don't, do we need to make a, I know we're, we don't have a motion on the agenda, but is that a direction as well? We can just...
I would ask for it, that we vote on the motion on the floor.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah.
Yes.
I forgot I had a motion on the floor.
Yes, ma'am.
Any more, any more discussion on this motion on the table before we vote?
Which one? Okay, I know.
Workshop, workshop.
Y'all know I have attention issues.
But this is about the workshop.
Let's just stay focused on one thing, because my head's going in 50 different directions here.
This is about the workshop.
This is the workshop?
Yes.
All right, now the committee, I'm assuming we're going to get that committee, or that advisory committee, to post the workshop, correct? Is that what we're saying?
Yes, yes.
Okay. All right.
Yep.
Good, because that'll give you a pretty good idea of...
Oh, yeah.
Who wants to be on the committee and some of the other people in the crowd.
Yep.
All right, okay.
Any other discussion before we vote? All right, all in favor?
Ah, ah.
Any opposed? That's unanimous.
Now, the second, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Can, can that just be done by direction, or do we need a motion?
Yes, so what I'm hearing is that the board wants me to come up with a plan, and I will ask Attorney Schuler to let me have a few minutes with the planner and explain what we want to do, how can we come up with a plan, maybe how she can come up with a plan and present to the board. Then we will need board action to move forward with that plan or make any changes to it that you would like.
Okay.
That, too, will also involve, as the chairman is asking, a, a, a different committee, you know, to deal with that on St. George Island. So, yes, because this...
Well, it could become constituted of the same people, but yes, it will be...
Well, here's the thing, this PUD is countywide.
Yes, it is.
The St. George Island is, is very narrow-specific, so I would prefer that the two are select... You can have cross-members, but I don't want the two of us to be exactly as...
Yeah, that's true.
Fair enough. Yep.
So I'll take that as board direction.
Yes.
And then I'll, I'll be back, so note time.
So in the meantime, Mr. Chairman, just a question. In the meantime, just so I got my brain wrapped around this, we're falling back on the 2018-04. There is no, right now, we don't allow PUDs in Franklin County.
Yes, that's right. Right now, 2018-04 is what's in effect, yes.
And, Mr. Chairman, just one more thing. When I got an email from an individual about that, I, I was looking on Unicode, and I couldn't find 2018-04.
I believe the clerk is working hard with Unicode to kind of clean up some issues.
And I know it's nothing against the clerk.
It's just...
Yeah. And...
Unicode is not very user-friendly.
I was going to say, it's not, it's not the clerk or her office's staff fault. I don't like Unicode. And I saw the Munich code guy at one of our conferences one year, and I said, "I don't like yours, I don't like y'all. Y'all, I can't find crap on your, your website." It should be a lot, it is not user-friendly. I don't know if there's something different we can go to.
Oh, yeah.
But I, I do not like Unicode.
Okay. Comments heard. And, well, the chairman...
I don't like it. I can't find nothing.
The chairman, one of our speakers today and some other people had the same problem finding the overlay, and the clerk worked, Ms. Gay worked very hard working with Munich code. I saw the emails back and forth, back and forth, and I don't agree with what they said, you know, but it's their thing, so, yes, we can start looking.
Yeah, because, and it's not just this one, it's other things I've tried to look up, just from my own per, and I don't want to have to call Ms. Gay and bug her every time. I mean, she's got a big enough job, and I don't want to, I mean, not that I don't like going to the courthouse, but I shouldn't have to go to the courthouse and look up in, in those books, a, a code or ordinance or whatever. I should be able to do it from the comfort of my own home, and, just like our citizens should, and be able to type in something, and it pop right up and not give you this whole rabbit hole of other stuff that's not applicable to what you're looking for.
The whole point of the ad, I mean, the application is to save Ms. Gay from getting a call, save a trip to the courthouse, you know, any inconvenience. Yep. Should be able to do it from your phone, wherever you're at, at that moment. Okay, so I got my marching board. You good?
Yes. I think that covers everything.
Attorney Schuler, is there anything else I need to do that you're thinking about?
We're on.
We'll talk.
Oh, we'll talk. Okay, good. Commissioner, do you want to stop and take a break?
Yeah, let's take five minutes.
Yeah, let's take five minutes.
Page nine, item number two. Basically, that's AFCON awarding the bid for the airport stormwater infrastructure. They did a review of all the bids that were received at the Tuesday, look at this, Tuesday, February twentieth meeting. That's when we opened the bids. And they are awarding, they are recommending awarding the bid to ECSC LLC. They have an understanding of the project. They've met all the checkboxes in the review. So, basically, board action to accept the airport engineer's recommendation and award the airport stormwater infrastructure improvement project to ECSC LLC. LLC, that should be LLC, Commissioner, sorry.
So move.
All right, we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Anderson. Second, by Commissioner Sanders. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous.
Do not laugh at item number three. Do not, because look at today. Also, anyway, commissioners, over the last few months, with the exception of today, uh, we've had some long meetings. Uh, I've received some comments from the public about the possibility of streamline, streamlining the meetings. Let, let, let me explain. So, it's not just the public as they're looking. So, some, uh, some of the people I got, like, this is, this is an email, Commissioner. These are comments in the store, people when they call. They're like, look, we're, we're looking for something, to hear about something on your report, Aaron's report, Attorney Schuler's report. And, you know, you have it down for one time, Michael. It's our past and still you guys haven't gotten to it yet. The other issue is me trying to be fair to people that are appearing in front of you, trying to give them a time, a fair time that will, they will be here. So, that's, that's my concerns and that's the comments I've gotten from the public, basically. I believe the chairman himself has received, uh, comments about it. He will expand on that because he sent some suggestions that he would like to talk about this morning about the possibility, if it would help, streamline the meetings and keep them flowing in a timely, orderly way. And by no means, Commissioner, am I saying you guys don't have good meetings. You have the best meetings in the world. So, yeah. Don't smile at me, Commissioner Cruz, but yeah. But I'll turn it over to the chairman and try to dig myself out the hole I just put myself in.
Well, the only thing you have to do, sir, if you find yourself on a hole, just stop digging.
Okay.
That's the best way to do that.
That's what I'm saying right now.
So, just looking at, and this is actually a conversation that Mr. Morone and I have had several times in the last several months. Uh, some of the things we were doing that kind of have changed over time, uh, was we had a, and this was all sent to you in an email. We had our department directors, uh, only appearing if they had an action item. But we could, you know, if the board wants to, and this is up for discussion today. This is just some items I sent to you so we can be ready to discuss it. We can move that all department directors and our contracted vendors, other than our attorney, uh, would only need to appear at a meeting for action items. Uh, some of the other thoughts were, uh, have all reports due by close of business on Friday before the meeting. So, the agenda could actually be published then, but then if there were late add items like we did today, they could be, uh, released in a supplemental report and added to the published agenda. You know, some of the reasons we were talking about with the department directors or the vendors are, especially with our county employees. A- all of our directors, all our department directors are working directors. They're not just running the, the field. They're actually, you know, Mr. Howard's actually on the tractor most days. You know what I mean? They're actually working on behalf of the residents. And, you know, if we have our reports, we can address issues, uh, as they come up. And the last thing we need to do is, as a commission, is, you know, we have an issue on Monday and we wait ten days to the next meeting to address an issue. Then we're actually sitting on something instead of just handling it. So, there was, those were some of the thoughts I had about that. Uh, items listed on the report can be improved with consent unless the commissioner wishes to pull in an item to discuss it first. Uh, one of the things I did notice, and I told Mr. Morone about it, so we've already started a process where there are items in your agenda that say for action. And there are items in your agenda that say for discussion. So, if it's for action, those we could try to do on consent if the board is wanting to discuss doing that. And then everything that's for discussion would already be pulled by the fact that it's been labeled to discuss it. Uh, but those were just some of the thoughts I had that, you know, we don't necessarily, if we have a report and we have it on a Friday before a meeting and it's verbatim written out, we don't necessarily have to verbatim read everything before we take action during the board meeting. We've already had it. We've already had a chance to read it. Uh, so just some of the things I want to do to spark the discussion this morning and bring to the table. What are your thoughts?
Mr. Chairman, I, uh, so I got an email as well, and the individual that emailed me, I emphasized that, um, one, our meetings are long for when I like to talk, um, for two, um, I don't think I'm gonna disservice the citizens that I serve, not only in my district, but the county as a whole, to try to streamline a meeting to make it a two-hour meeting instead of an eight-hour meeting. I know we've had long meetings, but let's face it, a lot of the stuff we've discussed has been very important. Um, so if I feel like I need to say something, I'm gonna say something. I don't care if it takes two hours or five hours or ten hours. I'm sorry. This is the way I feel. Number two, I do, uh, understand that and respect people's time, um, not only our presenters that come here, but also our directors and our public that provides commentary. But the first time that we are able as a board to discuss these items is at these meetings. And I know that some of us are pa- we're all passionate because that's how we are. Otherwise, we wouldn't be in these seats. But we, we have to bounce ideas off each other and discuss these things out. Otherwise, we, we're not gonna get anything resolved. So, that was, that was my, and I did respond back to that individual saying those exact, exact things. Um, I do agree, I, I do, as far as the department directors go, I, I do agree they don't need to be here. Um, I do, however, like to have some of them here sometimes just to, for the record or put on the record, some things that I've directed them to do or asked them to do just so that the public is aware. But, you know, I'm, I'm okay with everything that you've discussed. Um, but I just want the public to be aware, I'm gonna be here. I'm, I'm, I'm basically hired by you to present, represent you, and I'm not gonna streamline a meeting just for time's sake. I'm sorry. I'm just, just not gonna. If we need, if we need to cover the county's business, it takes eight hours, it takes eight hours. But I do agree, we can, we can streamline it in some instances. I do agree.
Anyone else?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Um, and the public, like Commissioner Ward already says, you know, this is the only time that we can, so that we're in, in actually discuss, you know, county business. So, however, I, I agree, you know, there, we need to have some kind of streamline, whether, I like some of your ideas in there, Commissioner Jones. Uh, while I was at the FAC, I asked a couple of questions, uh, to two different county, uh, commissioners from two, from two different opposite counties. And, um, actually, one of them was a chair. And, uh, you know, I explained to him, you know, some of the things. And, um, he said, uh, you know, y'all, y'all a little behind. Y'all need to streamline some things. It was his, that words. And the lady, the other lady kind of echoed his statement. And, um, I've been contact, I got the email, um, but I've been contacted like, uh, three, three times since then. I actually went to drop a paper off and got bombarded by a guy. He said, he had the, he had the meeting pulled up, and he's probably gonna be watching the meeting right now. He had the meeting pulled up. He said, you know, he, he made a comment about it. I was like, I said, listen, you know, this is the only time that we can discuss county business. But, um, you know, I think we've learned, you know, some of the practices, I always wondered, since I've been here, why is Aaron reading this whole report? And why is Michael reading this whole report when it was sent to us?
Yeah.
You know, Friday or Thursday. I think we can, if we need, you know, to discuss that, then we can pull it, but I don't think you need to read all these paragraphs. Now, some of that stuff is wordy, and that can take time. Um, but I always wondered that. And, and I think we have learned from dealing with what we've been having to deal with, our old school practice is not always the correct practice. So, that's all I have to say about it.
Mm-hmm. We're not taking action, David. We're just discussing what you guys wanna do, how you're gonna approach it.
I don't really wanna talk because I don't wanna extend this meeting any longer.
You're trying to streamline.
No, honestly, I, I will say this. Before I came in office a little over, it hadn't quite been two years. Feels like an eternity. But, uh, my main thing was people were complaining because those commissioners done had everything taken care of. That meeting was over by eleven, you know, daddy. And now we're getting emails about somebody that is concerned because they drove out of town and came back and the meeting was still going. Well, you wasn't here. You know, I'm all for getting out of work early, trust me. But, uh, but like, I'm gonna echo what Commissioner Crum said. This is the only time we can discuss things. Now, you know, I don't look in the past. I always look forward, but I will look back. In the past, there hadn't been a whole bunch of dialogue with our county commission. I mean, now, I know a couple, you've been here very long, but, I mean, just think back. There wasn't a lot of what we have going on here. We have a good, uh, we, we have a lot of discussion. We don't always agree, which is a good thing because you don't, you know, uh, but, yeah, we can, we could probably streamline a few things. Uh, but at, at the end of the day, this is our time. This is the time we have to discuss county business. And if this is the time that we, whatever time it takes for us to get to where we need to be, that's just where it's at. And, and, uh, I mean, I'd much rather have a, a six-hour meeting and get something accomplished than have a three-hour meeting and we all go home and catch lunch and I go back to the fish house or whatever. You know what I mean? I mean, this, this is our time.
Yep.
Um, and I don't know how else to, to handle that, you know?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I've been through the ins and outs of, of meetings. Um, we've streamlined it down to where you didn't hardly have even a meeting. You know, you come in here and pay the bills and everything else and go on out. Then I, we've had it to where staff, you take care of it. You don't worry about it. We don't worry about it. Staff takes care of it. Don't worry about it. But then the best thing that I like is the dialogue, the dialogue. Because this way, and, and I love the TV being here. A lot of people don't like the TV being here, but I like it. Because now the people can watch and see what we actually do, that we actually do discuss these things and work among ourselves to find a common good and a common solution to people, you know? And, you know, it needs to be streamlined to a certain point. The way we streamlined it a long time ago, I thought it was working, but some things have changed since I left and came back. Because at public hearings, we would ask if it was a big, in, in, you know, a, a big item that was, had, had this room packed out. We would say, okay, if, to, to streamline it, if everybody is of the same opinion, that just say, you know, you appreciate the time to talk, but you agree with what so-and-so said, or something like that, just to streamline it on public hearings and stuff. But you are right. This is the only place that the public can really see what their commissioners, the one who they vote and put in office, that represent them. And how many comments have I had in the past six months of that we have a good working board? A very good working board. And working means running the smile. You can't help it. You got to. You know, if everybody has an opinion and everybody is due their respective op- opinion and needs to be respected for their opinion. It's like, I, I've often said, a lot of times you're gonna get on this board and it's a four to one vote or a one in four vote. But when we leave this right here and walk out that door, guess what? We're still friends. We're still friends. We're still staff. We're still commissioners. And that's what's all that. So, yeah, we do need to streamline it, but to what degree? I, I like your suggestion, uh, Mr. Chairman. I think, I think they work. Um, but, you know, that's what I would say. I would say, you know, if, if the department heads ain't got nothing but informational items, let them contact Michael and say, hey, we ain't got nothing but informational items, and then let that go with that. If a commissioner wants a particular, um, uh, department head here, the commissioner goes to Michael and says, we want him here.
Right.
You know, uh, like we do the planning zone on certain things like, um,
Docks.
Docks, which we're not gonna be discussing that for a while, but, uh, but, um, until we get something on. But we pull out what we want out of there. And, I mean, all during the meeting we can. But, you know, the thing about it is, is this the time that we can make the public aware of things that's going on that's affecting our lives in Franklin County. It's like Commissioner Jones just said, you know, we've got to do something to help St. George Island. We do. We should have done that many years ago. That was, you know, a mistake on everybody's part. But it is, to me, it is very vital, very vital, that we do something about St. George Island. Because the wrong PUD can send the island down. And I'm literally saying down. Or the case of Ecola, mhm. That's what I'm saying. So, it's very important. These issues that come up before this board, it may only affect St. George Island right now, but in one way or the other, it affects the whole county.
Yes.
And we are not, let me reiterate this, we are not district commissioners. We are county commissioners. I represent from over, over there Indian Pass, just about it, all the way to Alligator Point. And north, uh, almost to Sematra and almost Liberty County, well, Liberty County on my end. So, that's what we are. We are county commissioners. We have issues and things to take care of.
So, Mr. Chairman, I think we can get, actually, what I'm hearing is, is good because, uh, we can do both. I think what I'm hearing, we streamline reports and reading of reports, and the commissioners want to focus more on, on particular items from a report or from a matter that's going on and discuss it amongst yourselves because this is your time. So, with that in mind, I'll start doing the agendas more with that in mind. Talk to your department heads. Try and reduce the reading of reports, and you guys will say, okay, you know, Aaron, item number two, I, I need to talk about this. And, you know, we do it that way.
Right.
I'll talk to all your department heads. Aaron's right here, and we'll, we'll, we'll move in that direction.
That's right.
So, I, I'd like, basically, Commissioner Sanders says, if you guys want, let me say, don't take for granted that a, a department head will be here. If you need to speak to a department head at the meeting about a, a matter, please let me know because if all that department ha- head has his information items, I'm gonna tell him, don't, don't show up. We'll call you i- if we need you.
We ain't never gonna see him again.
So, there was a time when all your department heads were basically on Zoom, and if you didn't need to speak to them, you just moved on.
Right.
Uh, that, that started because of COVID. You know, we did it that way. That worked for quite a while, to be very honest with you, you know? They were there only if you needed them. And we, we could kind of go back to that if you want me to. I'll talk to them about that, too.
Yeah, it, it's all good. So, that list that I read off and what I emailed to the, to you to send to the rest of the commission wasn't, it was all meant to prompt this discussion. It wasn't the things that, you know what I mean, that it needs to be this way or, or, you know, it's, it was to prompt the discussion and make us think about the different parts. But I agree with what's all of them said. That's why we wanted to have this public discussion. So, the residents will know, because there, there are some that don't like the fact that our meetings are long. But this is the only time we can talk about things we're gonna vote on.
Yes.
The legal, the legal aspect of it. I mean, that's.
This is it. And, and I would rather be a part of the board that I know our, our time is the, is the residents' time. And however long it takes, we're, we're here for it.
Yep.
I, I understand that. But we can streamline where we can. Go ahead.
Yeah, it, it also too, a, a big part of it is discretion of the chairman. We've always allowed the chairman to dictate the agenda and all that. So, it had to do a lot with the chairman and the future chairman and, and all that.
And that's what the chairman that I talked to pretty much explained to me is that it's chairman.
And I could do a better job of taking certain items and deferring them until other meetings, so there's, there's not too many things on one particular meeting, I've, 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 no?
No, sorry, Mr. Chairman, there's an issue that comes up, we need to get it done, I don't, I, I told you the other day, I get tired of kicking cans down the road, we've gotta stop kicking cans down the road. It's either gonna be addressed, or we prolong it, it's gonna just prolong it over, and then you're gonna add another topic, and then another topic, it's like procrastination. It's like, I, no, get it done.
All right.
I'm sorry, I don't care if it takes ten hours, get it done.
Commissioner, that's exactly why I brought it, why I brought it earlier about St. George Island being a special zoning district, we've talked about it several times, we need to start moving toward it.
You're right, exactly.
Okay.
Yep. I think you realize, Mr. Chairman, you got board support on here for that.
Yes, ma'am.
Absolutely.
All right, Commissioners, moving on to, if I, if I may, Mr. Chairman, moving on, I, 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 and I know one of the incidents was on St. George Island, it was actually discussed today. But more of these incidents happened in Commissioner Sanders' district, and I'm just gonna let her speak to some of the incidents that happened there and. Maybe point out some that some of the public may not have known, that, that there was a lot going on in your district, Commissioner, I'm just gonna sit back and let you. Break us the light, and, and, and again, thank the, the first responders for all their service, you know, so.
On the, the July fourth weekend, which if, I didn't, I didn't know, but apparently there was a fire out there on Alligator Point. July fourth, and it totaled out a house and several vehicles, and, um, that was bad enough right there. As far as I can understand, nobody was hurt, but property and, and property was lost. The other incident happened at, um, that was on July fourth, the other incident happened on, um, Saturday after July fourth. The, out there in Landmark, at Arizona Street, and this is a big, um, a couple was crossing the road to go look at the water at the right of way. That I had, that we have down there, and a couple, car come along and hit them both and killed them. And they were a couple in their forties year, forty years old, and the, the person that hit them stopped and called. They're the ones that actually made the call, but anyway, they lost their life. I looked, I called the sheriff and was talking to the sheriff about it, and I asked the sheriff, Sheriff, what can we do, it's a forty-five mile speed limit out there. You know, we've done everything that we can do, and he said, Commissioner, we've done everything that we can do, and he said, there's nothing we can do. Um, he said, it was just an accident and, uh, with, with two fatalities. Then on May, uh, uh, on Monday, uh, after the Fourth of July, um, there was a fire out there at Landmark Village on Carl King Street, so. And it, I don't know if it burnt the house down, it looked pretty bad to me, the structural damage was, but there was a, a thing that Carabel. I was, I happened to be at the dollar store at that time, and Care, I saw the Carabel Fire Department going out, I said, there's something at Landmark. Come to find out, I got a call about an hour later that said that a house was on fire out there, stored in the garage. But the thing that I loved seeing was the Landmark Fire Department with the assistance of Carabel Fire Department helped them. They used a new truck, and that just tickled me to death, and somebody was on there talking negative about it, and I said, no, don't talk negative. They're doing what they wanna do, and that, that is to do the fire, you know, and I just, I just felt like it was a good thing, but. There's, there's some things that I want to bring up about that too, and, um, Mr. Marong, do you mind?
No, not me.
Mr. Chairman, what I would like to do for these fires, the one at Alligator Point. And the one for Landmark, I would like to have a copy of the report, the board to have a copy of the, the reports on the fire.
The incident reports, okay.
Yeah, the incident report, and any other reports, and I'll also, if the, if the sheriff has it, and I know they do, I want to do a report. Um, on the, um, ETA, the estimated time of arrival, when it was, the call was called out, when they responded out, for both fires. And then, there's nothing we can do at Arizona, but there's a potential problem we're fixing to have at Spring Street again in Landmark. And that is, we need to have some kind of blinking light, because we have the people parking on one side of the road and walking ninety-eight, and we need to ask DOT to.
About crosswalk.
Uh, for a crosswalk, blinking light or something, to make the public aware that that is a crosswalk. We may need to get them to look at down at, around Arizona, because we have a lot of street ends out there, that it all goes down to the water, so we need to do that, so. Uh, I'm just directing, I'm not making the motion.
Does that, does that area, Commissioner, I'm trying to be helpful, does that area have any sidewalks on either side of the road? Well, I can tell you from our side, I mean, I'm not DOT, but I can tell you what they've told me in the past on St. George Island. They would not, they would not move forward, even though this board supported it, doing a crosswalk unless it's leading to a sidewalk. You can't lead somebody across the road to walk in the middle of the street, so we might have to do a sidewalk, is what I'm saying, I'm not.
Yeah.
But, you know, whatever it takes, we'll support you.
Yeah, let, let, let's send a letter to them and let's see what their now response is, because that's been a while back.
Yes.
And see how they're gonna respond, and then we'll go from there.
Mr. Chairman, if I could add too, uh, Mr. Sanders, just to help, um, is there lights there, is it, is those areas illuminated at all? So maybe we need to get with Duke to see. Are there, there are poles and just no lights, or is that something we could?
Well, some, some has lights and some doesn't.
So maybe we can get with Duke to see, I'm not trying to.
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah, see, this is what we're talking about.
Uh, if we could see what lights there, and if there, there's poles already existing, then they could just put a light up there, I know the chairman's discussing the pass a line item for lights. So, I mean, is that gonna, that's just one act, extra added step that we could potentially do for safety, and, um. I can tell you, with, with lights and crosswalks, uh, my experience has been the same as the chairman, is they won't, they won't go over. And I might, I might tell you something else about FDOT, and I know that I want to meet with them individually, like we did that time before, to discuss. Safety measures along our highway, because they are about to resurface, oh, and for the record, they're resurfacing all of Highway ninety-eight from. Uh, C thirty to past Carabel Bridge to, and they're gonna meet the middle all the way over into Oklah County.
Yep.
That's correct, right, Chairman?
Yep.
Because there's been some confusion with that, they're paving, all Franklin County roads are gonna be resurfaced now, when, I think it was twenty twenty-five, it's the landing date, um.
All Franklin County DOT.
Ninety-eight, HO ninety-eight, um, so now's a good time for all the commissioners, i- i- in my, in my opinion, to come up with. Safety things in their areas, like I want to try to get the speed limit decreased through East Point, through, um, sixty-five, that area. But we can ask and we can talk, till our, till our lips are blue and our faces are blue. FDOT is still gonna do what FDOT wants and what they don't want, and it's nothing against them, they have this big old manual that they look like, they look at to, and the. Safety engineers and they, but if there's an ac- I hate to say this, if there's a fatality or an accident, they look at things and weigh things a little more heavier than if there wasn't. And so, I, our job as commissioners, I tell people all the time, my job as commissioners is to provide safety, welfare of our citizens, and addition other things, but that's the main thing. And so if there's a way we can make it safer, I'm all for it, but we may ask them, they may say that it's not in their engineered standard plan, or. Their engineers decided that that wasn't prudent, so I just want the public to be aware of that as well.
Yeah, they're gonna do the final thing of what they say, uh, Ms. Thornburg brought up earlier. The fatality that happened on, uh, St. George Island Bridge during July fourth, it was. Uh, it was, it's a very sad event, very tragic, that someone lost their life, you know, on, on one of our, our roadways, or, you know, these two lost their lives. It's, uh, it's definitely, as I understand it, nothing I'm involved in, or the commission for that matter, but it's definitely something that has, uh. Sparked some conversation in the island community about maybe different parade routes in the future than what they have been using. I don't know how that's gonna go, but they want to still have a parade, but they also realize that same things we've already had discussed here this morning. Uh, during, uh, public comments and different things discussed, you know, there's a traffic issue there. So anyway, just to inform the board, there, there would be discussions going forward with that, uh, to try to, it's tragic, it was an accident. But the goal is to not have any of them, so.
Yeah, and, Mr. Chairman, addition, and I think you brought it up at our last me, or, a meeting before, is, are, and I appreciate all of our first responders, our, our law enforcement. Our fire department volunteers, let's face it, we are one of the, the rare counties that still have a volunteer fire department, volunteer first responders. Um, I know we've got the EMS, but, you know, they're, they save the county a lot of money, and they, they are, and I, I'm very appreciative of them, but. I want to make sure that they have what they need to do what job they need to do as well, that being said, um, and I know, again, the chairman said. Fire hydrants, we need to make sure that fire hydrants are where they need to be, we need, and I know that they know where they are, I know in East Point, there's a map, I don't know about Landmark. Um, but we all need to make sure, and, and I, there's a fire hydrant in my district, and I, and I like it, and I think it came after the East Point fire, because that was a big discussion. There's, there's a fire hydrant with reflectors on it, so, yes, they have it on a map or the GPS, I know we talked about that, but if you're. Trying to, your adrenaline's pumping, and you're trying to get to this fire, you may not be looking at a GPS, you may not be thinking about that, but if you see. Something that catches your eye in a reflective manner, you think, oh, wait, there's what I'm looking for, so, again, and I think that for legislative wise. Uh, I'm gonna be going to this innovative conference in Pensacola that talks about legislative stuff, I think we need to maybe look at, and I spoke with, uh. A commissioner from Gulf County, and they want to help out any way we can, and we can maybe help each other out, legislative appropriation for these small. Counties with volunteer fire departments to get some kind of help from the government to put a fire hydrant down, it's not cheap to just. People think, oh, if you need a fire hydrant, now let's just drill down and, and put one, no, it's a lot more involved, I asked, I've researched it, it's a lot more involved than it just. Let's put a fire hydrant here and it happening, so legislatively, I think we maybe need to move forward, as long as other commissioners agree, and make it like a legislative appropriation request. To get money for, I know we got the fire truck before, but fire hydrants, you know, equipment, training, whatever the case may be, for our first responders to. And I'm not discrediting them, I, I appreciate them, I'm, I want to make sure that they have what they need to do what they need to do. Discuss that out, not.
Good.
We're trying to limit this time on the meeting.
Sure we are, yeah.
Yeah, we are, we, we call certain, certain minutes, and we haven't stopped.
All right, Commissioners, item number five, uh, simple, you know, in the past, there was a policy for your billing and zoning department to issue certain simple permits. Without planning a zoning recommendation for approval, this is due to time when, uh, the billing department and zoning were the same department, well. Uh, as staff, as staff change, we separated the two, and then we stopped that policy, but Steve and I, Mr. Patterson, your billing official. We have since combined these two departments again, we, we saw where it, it, it just flows better, and with that, we're going to reinstate that process of, uh. Issuing simple permits, such as a storage shed that does not exceed four hundred square feet, and whether that affects water or parking requirements on a. Existing commercial site, another example will be power poles in the past that they've used for irrigation, other agricultural issues. Those used to be issued from the department without going to P and Z, so we're going back to that policy, the only addition to that policy is from now on, we will contact. Confer with that district commission and let you know, hey, the staff is issuing this permit, it's not going to P and Z, make sure you have no questions, no issues with it, and we will proceed with that. So we're reinstating that policy.
Mr. Chairman, real quick, before we move on, this, uh, power pole on, on a property don't have any, um, house, I understand what people are trying to, what. What they're trying to achieve, and I get that, I'm okay with that, but, and I know that there's an affidavit that they signed, but we need to make sure that that affidavit is the current ver- uh, the verbiage. Is up to date and current, because, um, I was speaking with someone, with Angela about it, and there's some verbiage that probably needs to be changed and, um. Updated on that, because again, like everything else, anything can be updated, so, as long as the affidavit's saying that they're not allowed to do this or do that with that property, I'm okay with that, but we also need to provide a penalty if they do. So, that makes sense?
Yes, it does, might require, uh. Might require an ordinance, but I'll.
Oh, I've already made a note to talk.
Okay, yeah, we'll talk about that, good, good job, good job, sir, all right, um, the ad should be in Thursday's paper for your A O E D and your P Z A. They can see, so I'm gonna run it for the next three Thursdays and get that, uh, hopefully in, in August, we'll have a collection of, uh, uh, applications for you guys to review for those. Sir?
We have two openings.
Yeah, I think A O E D has two openings, and P and Z has two openings, so it's two each, yes.
Saying, oh, yeah, okay, yeah.
I do believe. Um, item seven, uh, you're gonna be hearing from Mr. John Berry, and, you know, the last meeting, uh, Quinton kinda gave you guys an update, the meeting prior to that, John had distributed those forms. He's gonna call you, just discuss it with you some more, so he can get his list together to submit at the first, in, at the first or second of August, I'm not sure what John reminded me that date is. Um, uh, airport clearing project, that's an update, uh, we've met with D E P, about, there were some issues, there were some concerns that. That project, that clearing project was, was interfering with some wetlands, we had a meeting with D E P, D E P agreed that, okay, there's some. Certain areas that they could, they had to cut by hand, so they had to walk in there and do that, and they couldn't do any better, D E P agreed, there's a, two permits that we have already, we have. John from AFCON has requested, and D E P were gonna issue us this permit, once they're issued, the job will be completed, we have a little bit more to go. The only thing that concerns me there, I will tell you, and, uh. And that's why I was so hesitant a couple of times when Ted and, uh, Mr. Kirshenbaum, Samostella and Mr. Kirshenbaum stood there and talked about going behind the contractor. To level even lower than the contractor had done, is that there were some areas that were off limits because of, somebody help me here, what kind?
Gopher tortoise.
Yes, and those areas were disturbed when we went behind them, so, um, what I would prefer, and, uh, Ted and I talked about it, it's like. I know we talked about a couple of things yesterday, I hope this is one of them, yesterday was so long ago, was that from now on, I would prefer. If there's a contractor doing work anywhere, not just the airport, we let the contractor finish, we let the job closed out, and. Unless there is something that we see that's terribly wrong. With that job, I would prefer the county does not go while the contractor's actively working in an area, let them close that out, like I said, and then we go back and we have to. Do what we feel, you know, was, didn't work out, I'm, I'm trying, God, I'm, I'm trying to be so careful with my words here, but, yes, don't smile, Commissioner, I'm really trying hard here, but yes. You guys get the drift of what, what I'm basically trying to see here, you know, and I did have a conversation with Ted, or if it's something that's, we really feel that the contractor is neglecting. Ted will come to me and we will approach, ooh, sorry, we will approach, um. Uh, John or whomever, whoever the engineer of the project is, or the C E I, and say, hey, we have a problem here, is this being do, being done correctly, and we work it out that way. Just the one county staff working on property or in a project in an area where a contractor is working, it, it just gets messy, Commissioners, just, just. Commissioner Amos, you have that look, so go ahead.
I just got a question, are these, uh, uh, gopher tortoise, turtles, I'm just gonna simplify it, do they have these, uh, uh, areas. Already, you know, kind of marked off and whatnot?
I believe they, they did, but I'll double check and see, I think they had to, but I'll double check and see, maybe that could have been the problem. They, the contractor knew where they were and didn't mark them off and didn't expect county staff to come back while they were still working, but I will double check that, sir. To make sure they mark them, and that they mark the wetlands that D E P has indicated that they want, make sure we don't touch, I'll see, get John Collins to get that done.
Now, it's my understanding that in certain areas, and I may be wrong, but I was, I forgot where I read it at, but if, 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 if there's an obstruction there, and it's in a wetland. They can use the equipment to go in and take out the obstruction, as long as they restore it. To whatever damage they may have done, ruts, whatnot, as long as they take it back and restore it correct.
Yes, but I do believe they have to get a permit. But I do believe they have to get a permit, that area has to be recognized by D E P before they do it. So D E P knows how it look, and they wanna make sure that when they come back again, it is restored to what it should have been, if you follow me. Good? Okay, uh, so, was it the June 4th meeting? So, uh, a, a meeting in June, we had scheduled, uh, a workshop for this afternoon to discuss, uh, primary accessory and secondary structure. Well, however, since we scheduled that workshop, there's been so much discussion about this issue, and this, this refers to the poolhouse issue, that's where everybody knows it, out on St. George Island, that we now instead have, uh, a public hearing on Tuesday, July 23rd at 6:00 P M to amend the zoning ordinance that affects the accessory, I'm sorry, primary and zoning, obviously, the, the thunder. The primary and secondary accessory structures in there. So, the, the workshop on the 23rd basically caused me to just cancel today's, this afternoon's workshop, public hearing scheduled on the 23rd, cancels today's workshop. However, after that public hearing on the 23rd, the board may then want to reschedule a workshop to get in more detail, but I don't know, I can't foresee what we're gonna discuss on the 23rd right now. So that's what I'm saying, at that time, you guys could revisit that. But all in all, there is no workshop this afternoon at 5:00 to discuss primary and accessory structures, or permitting of primary and accessory structures. Good? Good, okay.
But we'll be on the 23rd.
But they will be on the 23rd at 6:00. Now, that's next week, Tuesday, the 23rd, and then that same Thursday and Friday is budget workshop. So it's a busy week next week. Which leads me into my next, um, item, your budget workshops. Aaron already discussed that. You will have the link, I speak loud and rain, you'll have the link to the budget books, uh, here coming up within the next few days, okay? Um, you'll have an agenda and a link to each budget book, as I normally do. If anybody would like that book printed, this is a big book, let me know, we'll have that done for you also.
We all have it in a couple of days, because I'm wanting to go talk, like, to the sheriff and different departments.
I'll have Aaron give you a call, Commissioner. Yes, tell you what it is, and maybe if, if not, we could at least get you those sections that you want to go discuss, okay? Discuss that, and item 11, of course, is your next regular meeting, which is Tuesday, August 6th, which means we have an extra week this week, but that all goes to budget, so we really don't have an extra week. Okay, that's it for me.
Mr. Merle, I have a couple of questions for you.
Yes, sir.
Where are we at on our hospital consultant?
Okay, so we are awaiting a confirmation. It's either Wednesday, Attorney Schuler has a hearing, and then we, we're trying to schedule around that hearing, I have a meeting on 10:00. A, a meeting with the consultant, Attorney Schuler and I do, it's, we're trying to get it in this week, no later than next week. But yes, I was in contact with Jim James from Baker Tilly.
Okay.
Okay.
Another thing, and we, we mentioned this before, actually, I think we mentioned, mentioned before, when Ms., during Ms. Erin's report. So we had a conversation at some point in the past with the, uh, about getting no wake signs and getting the Coast Guard to mark the channels, both channels, after they've been dredged.
Yes.
None of that works happened yet. So what do we need to do to get that done?
I'm gonna try again with the Coast Guard to reach out. Actually, F W C, I talked to John Kramer last week for the Friday. Yes, it was, and, um, they are having some of the, the, um, no wake signs posted based on the state's ordinance. And so I was asking him, what do we need to, maybe use the same contract at the same time? He said, send him our ordinances, 'cause we have to have an ordinance in place for them to, to, to establish and to enforce the no wake zone, um, that we do for. So I gotta go pull our ordinances, send it to them, and see if they're still, if they need to be updated, or any changes need to be made, but I'm glad you said that.
I'm glad you brought that up, Chairman, 'cause I had that on my list of things to bring up.
Yes, I did talk to John Kramer.
And, Mr. Chairman, just so the public, I'm sorry, the public is aware, um, I know there was some social media posts and things about the rocks formations that were in the East Point Bay. He, Mr. Kramer, uh, will be here August 6th, at our August 6th meeting-
Yes, he will.
-to discuss that, and the bear, uh, bear refuse bins that we got an appropriation for. So I just wanted the public to be aware of that. Um, I didn't wanna hijack your-
Yeah, I know you could. Uh, one other thing that, that's come to my attention, and we've had this problem now for a little while, but I'll clarify before I start talking with this. It isn't about trying to find out who's at fault, we just need to find a way to get it fixed. So, we're still with our volunteer fi- fire departments and first responders. The pager and everything works good, they get the page, but a lot of times, the volume's up really high on what they're trying to listen to, and, 'cause I, they let me actually listen to it, okay, to some of their pages. And it's very loud during the static time, but when somebody starts talking, you barely can hear. You can barely, you know, or it's some cordial. Uh, so I don't know, it's something to do with FireNet. I don't know if it's, I mean, if we can't find a way forward with what we got, do we as a board need to discuss hiring somebody independently to assess our current system? I know we're talking with Triumph about a great system, but that might be months or even a year away. In between, we still need to have valid communications.
Yeah, and this, this, you just approved at the last meeting, if you remember, a repair to the FireNet system, because it went down in between meetings. I went ahead and got it approved, I went and approved it and got you guys to ratify. So I'd have to talk to Renee about that. That's a dispatch issue with FireNet.
Right, well, at the end of the day, I'll say this, and I'm not being tried about it. I don't care where the fault is, and nobody's trying to point fingers, it just needs to be operational.
Yeah.
Needs to work right.
Mr. Chair, you have it as well. The other issue that I see is, they got, you know, dispatch has so many consoles up here. Every, every fire department have their own different system that they want, so if you find something that works real good and unified, I think that'd be fantastic. That's our other issue.
Yes, and, and, uh, Mr. Chairman, the FireNet is probably the oldest style system that they have. Everything else now is, is patched by, to mobile phones, or, actually, it's phone, everybody uses their phone to- work with dispatch to get back, you know, and, and, we had this discussion years ago. The, the system that they have, I believe now, has not been updated since then. So if there's a fire and you're using the, the system, and you're selling your phone, it's with you, they can see where you are, the Sheriff's Department, in that cluster with that fire. So if someone needs help, they could, they know where to send everybody else. The problem with the FireNet system, there's no GPS on that. And if you miss the page the first time, there's no getting it back. With the phone system, it's a, it's a notification and a text, you can always find out what the message was. And, and it's, it's updates, but I'll, I'll-
I get that, and I know we're moving toward that. I don't dispute that.
Yeah.
But in between, what we have still needs to function better.
I got it. I'll, I'll talk to Renee, I'll run to this, I'll talk to dispatch, see what she says. I thought the recent repairs fixed that you guys just approved, and maybe we approved the repairs and they didn't get the equipment as yet. That could be the issue, but I got an update for you, sir.
Could be delayed.
I sure will.
All right, anyone else have anything for Mr. Merle?
I do, Mr. Chairman. Uh, we discussed, uh, Williams', uh, I think it was last meeting, or the meeting before, about the, uh, security issue with the potential hacking, where, I think we've had it.
Yes, yes, yes.
Did we ever-
No, I, I have not discussed it with David yet, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Did that, I, I sent him in another mission, actually.
And then the other thing is, is where, where are we at with the consultants?
That, that's what was asked earlier. Uh, Attorney Schuler and I, I'm trying to schedule a meeting this week with Baker Tilly, Attorney Schuler and myself. Yes, to, to give them our issues we have with their engagement letter, um, certain things I'm just not comfortable with. And if, can we work something else out, or do I need to come back to the board and we move on to another, one of the other forms? That's where we're at.
Anyone else have anything for Mr. Merle?
One thing. Uh, can you contact Mr. Joe Ross, the chief of the Landarc, by department, and see if they're ready to, uh, get rolling?
Okay.
And if they are, then, Mr. Schuler, you get that contract out.
The draft is ready, ready to go when authorized to be released.
I can tell you, with the fire, the volunteer fire department in the District 7 area, I can't speak about it in the other area, I want them to sign a contract. I want every fire department to sign a contract. I think that would make sure that we're gonna ensure that we're gonna have fire. And, um, but anyway, if you'll contact Mr. Jones if he's ready.
Anyone else? All right, Mr. Merle?
Good.
Attorney Schuler?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I did not prepare a report for today's meeting. Uh, will inform the board that at 2:00 today, myself, Aaron, and Mr. Merle are meeting with the city of Apachcola regarding the potential amendment to the, uh, surtax in our local agreement. We've already had the meeting with Caravel. I understand the City Commissioner of Caravel was talking about that issue at their meeting last Thursday, but I, I haven't got the report back from Mr. Hartman, the city attorney, so I don't mind, but I'll, I'll see him today at 2:00 and get an update. Unless the board has any questions for me.
Have you received anything from City Attorney Hartman about the proposed lease agreement for Sylvester Williams?
I have not. I have not. I will be seeing him at 2:00.
Okay, we'll follow up on that, he's supposed to get it to us.
Yes, sir, I will do so.
And that's correct, Ms. Griffin?
That's correct.
And so what's the, how long is the lease supposed to be, Ms. Griffin?
Forty?
Forty-five years.
Forty? Okay, cool.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I got followed up with Mayor Melander. He called me, as if it's a city commission meeting, and he said that the city of Caravel does not want to hinder Franklin County from doing what they wanna do with the EMS, healthcare tax, and that. But at the same time, he wants an answer to what his problem was with it, of what they, the city of Caravel was wanting to do, Michael.
Yes.
And he, he's needing some communication from somebody. So I'm gonna tell you all, and you all can take care of, uh, uh, Mayor Melander, and let's do that, so we can move ahead, because we've got budget next week.
Yes, so, if, if I may, Commissioner, I already reached out to, uh, the CEO at Williams, and he has a meeting scheduled with the mayor to discuss just that.
Do you know when?
I will, if I can't tell you right now, I can tell you before you leave.
Okay, but we need to know when, because we need to know that something's in the workings before we go to that workshop.
Tomorrow. I got the message last week from Mr. Walker, and I will be meeting with Mayor Melander next Wednesday, that's tomorrow.
What, what time is that?
That I don't know, I could find out for you, right now.
Mayor Melander and I have, we have, never. I'll call him today.
I need to call him Mayor Melander, too.
It's not a big deal.
It's funny, 'cause you say that, when we went to the meeting, and I said, Mayor Melander, he said, I'm still Tony.
It's like I'm still Cheryl. I know there was some items, um, going on, uh, I went out there for an annual checkup out there at Caravel Clinic, so I brought it up to Mr. David's attention, Mr. David Walker's attention, and he's rectifying this problem.
I have something I wanna ask you before we completely go to Commissioner Collins.
Yes, sir.
Attorney Schuler, I know that we've had a couple of discussions now about an R V ordinance. We're still working on a draft to present to the board, correct, to try to iron out some of the discussions we had?
Yes, sir, so, we've been talking, but he has the update.
Yeah, so here's the, Commissioner, you know, Courtney's back, so I can see clearly now the rain is gone. So, yes, so we have a meeting scheduled, myself, um, I was waiting for Steve, I was trying to, Thursday, I can't promise Thursday. Myself, your billing official, and Attorney Schuler are planning to sit down and have something to you to August, for you guys to deliberate. And possibly send to another workshop, that's, that'd be your call. Depends on what you see in front of you, basically, is what's gonna come out. Because again, I know you want citizen input on that deal, too, you know, either which way.
Yeah, well, at the same time, though, I'm still of a mind that, yes, we're trying to stand up home enforcement and actually have some, but if we can't do anything with RVs, we're wasting our time.
Yeah, that's, that's the main complaint-
We're wasting everybody's time.
-that your departments get, RVs.
So I just wanted to make sure it wasn't just lying dormant, let me put it that way.
Yes, sir.
All right. Commissioner comments?
Just real quick, uh, tomorrow, I'm gonna be out with our county engineer, Mr. Caleb Brown, um, for looking at some roads, and not, uh, in my whole district, roads that we chose, but I'm also gonna look at roads just in general, so that I can get a game plan for the next four years. So far, I'm gonna be on this board, try to get some roads redone. I'm gonna also be working with the city. I've, I've spoke with Mayor Melander and some of the staff, uh, I spoke with Mayor La Paz before she retired. So I'm just gonna do that, I just want the board to be aware that I'm gonna be out doing that tomorrow. So I know that some roads need to be resurfaced and redone, I get that, uh, just be patient, there's a process that has to go through. And the problem is, I got sticker shot when he told me how much one road was gonna, just one road, was gonna take to be resurfaced, and I don't even have a quarter of that in my road paving funds.
How much is it per mile now?
He didn't say per mile, but without the engineering, one road I was wanting to get done in Caravel was gonna be over a million dollars to, to resurface, potentially widen and restart. That's without the engineering fee. So, we gotta do something moving forward, you know, to make sure that we can still provide infrastructure. That's why I brought up impact fees at our last board meeting, is because we're gonna have to figure out a way, moving forward, to provide these things for our county and for our citizens that we serve, but do it in a way that it's the most fiscally responsibly, responsible as well, because I, I haven't checked my road paving funds recently, but, I mean, there are certainly a million dollars in there unless something miraculously happened in the past, however long, but, um-
I actually just finished the budget for road paving funds, I can send you all that out.
Yeah, yeah, if you could do that tomorrow, if tomorrow, Aaron, I appreciate that, but again, we're just, again, we're gonna have to think moving forward how we're gonna be able to-
Create a road paving department under the county, it's gonna be cheaper.
We do, I, I thought about that, I've honestly thought about that, but, well, that's a whole nother discussion on another day, but anyway.
Any other Commissioner comments?
Uh, I've got one. Aaron, um, have you heard anything from C W Roberts?
I have not.
Well, they were down here yesterday bringing signs.
Oh, okay.
So, I mean, are they approved to start that Phase 3? Because the Phase 2 has not even been paved yet.
Well, C W Roberts has been, um, they are moving forward, but they, they haven't started yet, so.
Okay. I'll stop and talk to him. If I won't find out anything, I'll just stop and talk to him.
Anyone else?
Commissioner Ward, I will, uh, since Caleb's coming out, I'll probably give him a call tomorrow, so just don't expect that. Just getting an update on the District 3 project that we've been working on. And, uh, there was a comment made earlier, and it just didn't sit right with me, so I'm gonna say it. 'Cause it was addressed to the Commissioner, so as a Commissioner, I'm not looking at St. George Island, or have I ever looked at it as a cash cow, so. Just throwing it out there, that perception can be squashed when it comes to Commissioner Croom, and I'll probably speak on the rest, the rest of the board, so. But it was said, so, that is, I know it wasn't you, but. It was said, and that is my Commissioner comment on that.
Anyone else? Meeting adjourned.